Welcome, everybody, to the March 5th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The Commission now utilizes speaker request forms, so if you'd like to speak on any item, please complete the speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers, and return it to Commissioner Manager Holly Hennies located to the lower right side of the dials. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Deb to do the moment of silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner Hagka. Next on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda.
No move.
Second.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Drews. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us to number five, recognition of our new employees. As I said earlier, we wanted to take the time, we do the meet and greet with our new employees to kind of, so they can meet the commissioners, and not only that, but also kind of get to know other people that are working for the county. A lot of times, you don't, you keep working in your own department, you don't get to see or meet people in the Treasurer's Office, the State's Attorney's Office, the Highway Department, that type of thing. So this is a good time for you to come in and mingle and get to meet them, and it's also a chance for the commissioners to get to meet the new employees. So if the new employees have any questions, they know who to contact. So we just want to take the time to show our appreciation to our new employees and explain to you why we do that. That's why we do it. Sending other comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
I would encourage each new employee to figure out what district they live in, so then if you do ever have to get ahold of us, you'd probably want to start with the commissioner that would service your district.
Thank you, Ron. Any further comments? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, folks. Next, it comes to the consent agenda, and I will recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 20th, 2024. Number seven is to acknowledge the filing of petitions as application for incorporation of the proposed Darlington Estates Road District by the voters within the proposed district boundaries. Number eight is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Rochford Rural Fire Association. Number nine is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Black Hills Studio of the Arts. Number ten is to appoint Mr. Casey Canube to the Weeden Pest Board representing Unit Two for a term of three years to be effective today, March 5th, 2024. Number eleven is approval of the adopt a highway application for a portion of Country Road by Cato Thorstensen, LLP. Number twelve is to declare surplus four vehicles for the purpose of an online auction: One 1998 Chevrolet S10, asset number 05307; One 2012 Dodge Ram 2500, asset number 68404; One 2012 Dodge Ram 2500, asset number 68405; and One 2009 Ford F250, asset number 42809, which was submitted by the Highway Department. And finally, number thirteen is approval of the request for the authorization to reapply for the VOCA and STOP-VALA grants by the State's Attorney's Office and the Victims' Assistance Division.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, this time, is there any commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, number ten.
Number ten from Mr. Roskinak. And anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved items six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, and thirteen of the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Drews and seconded by Lassiter to approve items six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number ten, Mr. Roskinak.
Mr. Chair, is Casey here today? Casey, do you want to step on up and welcome? Thanks for stepping to the Board for, what is it, a?
Three-year.
Three-year term?
Two-year.
But go ahead and let the general public know that kind of what your position's going to be with Pennington County, Weeden Pest, or Natural Resources.
Yeah, so I, I've been asked by the Weeden Pest Board if I would step up and take a Board position. I think it's a three-year term, so I will, yeah, I said I would do it, and I guess I would just be interested in learning how it works and maybe serve in the county, too, so.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, Casey.
Thank you.
Welcome, Casey.
Thank you, Casey.
Mr. Chair, move to approve number ten.
Second.
Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, this brings us up to the regular agenda items, and this is a presentation for information only on the Mitchell Lake Dam project, and I'll recognize Mr. Jim Goobles, District Manager, from the Black Hills National Forest, the Mystic Ranger District. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. Appreciate the time to brief you today on a project that we started public comment period on Friday for the next 30 days, the Mitchell Dam Great America Outdoors Project. So I've got about 16, 17 slides to share with you for information, and then we'll also talk about a public meeting coming up next Wednesday night in Hill City for the public to attend and gain some information. All right, Holly, I'll have to, you've got it saved here, right? Right there. All right, very good. So as I mentioned, we have some funding through Great America Outdoors to do some work at the Mitchell Lake Dam just east of Hill City. Go through a little background here for you. That dam was built by the Civilian Conservation Corps in 1937. It was built for basically recreation benefits. As you'll see later, there really are no flood control benefits to that dam. It is classified as a high-hazard dam, and it's really in poor condition. You're going to see some slides here about some of the really poor condition that dam is in. It's an earthen embankment with some concrete outlet works. It was designed to store about 111 acre-feet of water. Today, it currently stores about 18 acre-feet, and that is because of the amount of siltation that is currently present in there. And it, Spring Creek watershed flows through this lake and area. So just a little location there, you can see where it is just east of Hill City. You see Major Lake Dam there, and then Mitchell Lake Dam. I think lots of folks are familiar there, just south of Highway 385 there. All right, so some of the deficiencies, I'll try to breeze through these. I'm not an engineer, so I'll put that caveat here on top of it, but you can see from some of the numbers here, this reservoir right now cannot safely route the flood events calculated at the 50- and 100-year timeframes. So the high-hazard rating, it's in poor condition. There's a lot of concrete deteriorating on the spillways. The existing low-level outlet has not been operated since 1983, so it's believed to be in a stuck position. And as I mentioned about the significant amount of sediment, original dam was designed with 53.3 acre-feet in 1937. We just did a survey in 2022, and that's down to 17, about 18 acre-feet of storage. So we've lost about 70% of the storage due to siltation. Some of the alternatives we're looking at is basically three. It's the common, you know, no action, do nothing. The other two options are to rehabilitate all the structures that are in place, and then the other option is to actually decommission the dam, go through a drawdown process, and take the dam out and restore that stream channel in that riparian area. Both alternatives come with a couple of very different cost estimates, and we'll hit those, but you can see some of the benefits to each of those alternatives there. I will add with the decommissioning alternative, I have met with a trails group in Hill City. They've got a very ambitious, like, 60-mile trail loop project in the works that they've been meeting with us, and one of those trail loops that they want to see developed in the future would come down to this Mitchell Lake area, cross over the water body, and then connect on up to Sheridan Lake. So they've, they've got some really pretty neat trail plans in the future here. So for the fixed what is there scenario, that's got a hefty price tag to it, somewhere in the neighborhood of $34 million. The benefits of that is you would essentially reconstruct all that infrastructure that's there, and then, of course, the dam would no longer be deficient. The spillway capacity would be increased to meet what we need to, to meet those 50- and 100-year flood events, and then we reduce that risk of failure. Of course, one of the cons is very high price tag. The hazard classification remains the same, and we got to continue to maintain and inspect another dam on the forest. That's just a real technical drawing of what a new spillway structure would look like. We're currently working with engineers with the Bureau of Reclamation that are doing the design work for us on this. The decommission alternative has a price tag right now of about $2.4 million, and I should back up and mention, we already have funding of about $2.8 million from Great America Outdoors, and we've got to utilize those funds by 2027, or we will lose them. Some of the pros with decommissioning, it's much lower cost, obviously. We get rid of some risk and liability with removing the dam, no more ongoing maintenance, and then we restore that, that stream to a, basically, a natural riparian area, which would actually enhance some of the fisheries opportunities there and some recreational opportunity, too. Again, some more technical drawings of what some of that riparian work would look like after the dam would be removed and that stream channel put back into place. The no-action alternative ranges from, you know, $0 up to almost $15 million, and it does include potential for damages and loss of life if that dam fails. There's a number of deficiencies we've identified. The dam is at risk of breaching. You can see some of the photos, a lot of the concrete is failing on the walls. We would have continued compliance costs in the future, and just more maintenance and work to deal with there under a no-action alternative. So here's a slide that is just good to see the data. The engineers ran the scenarios to show that really that dam is offering no flood protection of any sort right now. With the 50-year and 100-year events, you can see the data with peak flows. With the dam in place and without the dam in place, it's less than a, obviously way less than a 1% benefit, but .18% at the 50-year event and .1, .17% with the 100-year event. So that, that shows you that data, just that the dam is not really offering any flood control benefits. And that's just a graphic depiction of some of the floodplain below the dam and what some of the modeling shows with that work. So in conclusion, it's, we know the dam is in really poor condition, that's why we went after some of the funding. We did receive about $2.8 million right now, and we have engaged a number of entities. I've been to Hill City talking to the Economic Development Commission. I'm going to Hill City Monday night to talk to the city council, and then Wednesday night, we have a public meeting in Hill City for the public to come in and learn about the project, too. So I mentioned, we are out for public comment. There's lots of ways the public can offer some comments electronically. We did mail out about 180 letters directly to folks in the area, so they got notified in writing and with the instructions of how to send us comments on the, on the project. It will run that public scoping essentially the month of March for 30 days, and this is just kind of the instructions on how to navigate that electronic commenting process. We call it CARA, and it's a essentially electronic database for submitting comments, and that walks you through how to do that, and that's really the end of the presentation. So if you have any questions, we can try to answer those for you right now.
Mr. Drews.
Jim, obviously, siltation always creates issues over a period of time with dams such as these. Does your rehabilitation, the high price on that, the $34 million, does that include removal of that siltation?
It does, and that's a large part of that cost, is that is factored in for removing the silt and taking it off-site. So that's a huge part of that cost.
So there's, there's probably no reason to try to rehabilitate without the removal of the siltation. I mean, you can't do it with the siltation.
Right, that would definitely have to be part of that, that alternative, yes. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
So Jim attended the Hill City Economic Development and did the presentation, and you know, that question was, is where are you going to get the 35 million? It's just not out there in a bank, and the reality is, is that there is 2.8 million that is available, and if you don't do anything, eventually, instead of the 70% loss, it's just going to be 80, 90% loss, and that's really not a, creating a habitat for decent fishing. So personally, I would lean for the, trying to decommission that for 2.8 million, and as I mentioned to Jim, maybe enhance that with some parking area for folks to park, and maybe a picnic area, some kind of a park, but I think you'd, I think that area would get used a lot more if it, if you enhance the fishing habitat, and by decommissioning, that would be one of the goals, is to enhance the fishing habitat and create some pools or whatever. So anyhow, thanks for coming today, Jim, and giving the presentation to the Commission.
Mr. Deb Hagka.
Chair, thank you.
Did you have a, did you have a comment, Jim?
No, I just, thank you for those comments. That is, I would just add to that, that we, we have been working with South Dakota Game Fish and Parks on this plan, and they see great opportunities for more enhancement of that riparian area with some picnic tables, some fishing access, some parking access, so they're, they're very interested in, in future development with that.
I'll only add the question, is there a time, excuse me, Deb?
No, you're good.
I just wondered if there was a timeline that, whatever direction you go, that you'd like to have this complete?
So the funds expire in 2027, so that's a huge deadline for us, but getting through the public comment period is 30 days, and then I would like to get to decision as soon as I can after that, so we can actually start implementing work.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hagka.
Thank you, Mr. Goobles, for coming today and having a conversation beforehand. Brittany's been working with Mr. Goobles and Tawny?
Yep.
And what a great addition to have Brittany around, because she does, she's done a lot of that area with riparian and other things, and when you have someone that kind of has been there, done that, not that you guys in the Forest Service haven't done this before, but she's always been a great help, so I thank Brittany for helping you. I also think you should take the public comments seriously and the calls, and then kind of go from there. You have a month, and if people don't really know about it, the main thing is get the word out. I used to fish there, what, 20 years ago at least, and it was pretty good fishing. It was cool, it wasn't really deep or anything. Just loved going out there, and there's frogs and turtles and all kinds of stuff, so I quite enjoyed it. Me and my friend used to go there and fish, so I think it's a great extension for that creek in that area and Hill City area. Main thing I'd be excited of just to see is, maybe not excited, but just like to see the comments and the calls that you've gotten, and then maybe go from there, maybe how we can help with that, or, or how we put letters into the state for you, if that's what we need to do to make this. So if we're going to decommission and still make it into a recreation area, makes sense, but if you're going to decommission and it's not going to have that safety from that 100-year flood, I'm not so worried about the 500, as I am the 100-year, because it takes one time, as we remember from the dam at Canyon Lake. So mine is the safety, plus if, like I said, if we can decommission and make it a nice place for people to go and still fish and do things, I'm all in with that, but let's make sure we have that safety factor there, too, because they put a dam there for a reason. And maybe the flows are different now, and you guys know all that. That'd be nice to kind of see if the flows have changed, and that would make that difference, where like you said, you showed it up there, but maybe it's not a safety factor anymore, sir. So appreciate your comments today, and like I said, if you could save that area, make it still a fishing area and a place for the families and stuff around that area, or just the tourists would be awesome.
All right.
Thank you for your time today, sir.
Thanks for your comments, appreciate it.
So Jim, my comment would be is, could you describe a little bit to the people that are in the audience and watching YouTube, you know, as a district ranger that you are, some of your responsibilities? Because there's probably, I don't know exactly how many district rangers there is, I know there's quite a few, but you all have different sections, and could you just identify some of that for us?
Sure. No, I thank you for the question. So the Black Hills National Forest is broken into four districts, one of which is in Wyoming, and each district has a district ranger that is in charge of that district. And on projects like this, we go through the required federal NEPA process, National Environmental Policy Act. And at the end of that public scoping, if we're ready for a decision, then the line officer on that district is the one with the authority to implement and sign that decision. Our work is extremely variable. We deal with all kinds of things, from range to timber to mining to dams to recreation to, it's different every day, which keeps it very interesting, but it's a, I happen to be in the Rapid City Mystic District, so central part of the, the Black Hills, and I just really value getting out to our local governments and partners, and by the time we're done with this project, we will have had four different meetings. So I'm thinking Hill City should be very informed on this project and lots of opportunity to engage, and I just really value that, that local input and opportunity to engage and, and comment on it.
I appreciate that, Jim, because I think the public comment, you know, the NEPA is a long process, and I think this Commission very well knows that, but the amount of work and public input that the Forest Board has to do before they move forward with anything is quite extensive, as you just explained. And so our environmental director, Scott Guffey, is on the NFAB board, and so he gives his input also, and I was an alternative one time, and so I've seen, been part of some of your guys' public comments on how long it takes, and so I know it takes a while, but it takes persistence and, and encouragement to get it done, and I think this Commission appreciates you being here today to let the public know what's going on.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
So Jim, as long as you're here, you might let the Commission know that we do have a new permanent supervisor in Custer.
Yes.
Sean, I can't remember his last name, but it's good to have a permanent supervisor now, because we're going through that forest plan revision, and now that we've got somebody stationed in Custer, I see that process moving along a lot more quickly.
Yes, no, that's a great point. Sean Cochrane is our new forest supervisor in Custer, and yeah, it's been a long year. We've had, I'd have to count up, five or six actings in the last 12 months, so it's nice to have a, a permanent person here, and Sean, I don't know if he's met you all yet, but he's been getting out and attending meetings and, and meeting folks, but it's good to have him on board, and yep, it's, he's here and working away.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it.
All right, thanks for your time.
Next, that brings us up to item 15, which is the Cooperative Use Agreement for Pivot Point, and I'll recognize Davis Purcell, Barry Tyce, and I already forgot you guys.
Lisa Kautzman.
Okay.
Yeah, good morning, Commission. This use agreement that is being presented is between West River Mental Health and the county. They occupy the Pivot Point building, and we have some representatives here to give you just a brief update on their operations.
Good morning, I'm Barry Tyce, the Director of Pennington County Human Services in the Veteran Service Office, and I apologize, my voice is gone today, but it was important that we have Lisa Kautzman introduce herself as the Director of Pivot Point, and she was just going to share a couple of brief data points regarding Pivot Point over the past year and the successful outcomes we've had in our community by conducting another public-private partnership with this facility.
Thank you, Barry. Lisa?
Good morning. Like I said, my name is Lisa Kautzman, I'm a nurse practitioner, and I am now the Director of Pivot Point. I've been with Western Mental Health for 33 and a half years, and we've now had one year in with Pivot Point. We've had approximately 769 admissions through the 11 counties, and 300 of them were moved over to the stabilization unit, staying approximately 2.6 days, and we've only had to send four people to East River Yington, HSC. Anything else? Oh, we've had thousands of phone calls that we, our counselors take care of through Pivot Point.
So Lisa, we've had a lot of admissions, do you happen to remember some of the numbers?
For the year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, I think it was 769 for the year. 300 we moved over to the stabilization unit, which is up to five days that they can stay so that we can get them mentally balanced and back into the community.
And then I think you also opened up a pharmacy also?
We have not yet, we're still working on getting in an internal pharmacy to help better, you know, the community with medication and things like that.
And not to, just real quick, this agreement, now having this agreement in place allows us to have those discussions about putting a pharmacy in that building.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Hagka.
Chair, so Mr. Purcell, is everything done in that building except for the, if they added a pharmacy?
Yes, it is. Yep, this agreement was in place last year when the building opened, we're just renewing it.
Okay, and so you've finished everything in that building that needed to be finished at this point, except if they add a pharmacy?
Correct.
Okay. And then, Ms. Lisa, I'd like to thank you. I know a lot of people that work with your BMS in the community and including ourselves. We appreciate you, we appreciate what you guys have done, it's made a huge difference. 769 in the county is a lot of people getting help with mental health, and that's huge. And Barry was instrumental, the sheriff was instrumental, a lot of people were instrumental in moving this forward for a reason, and it just shows that we needed that help, and you made that difference, so we appreciate that. You being a nurse and then taking a leadership role, that's a lot of difference, isn't it?
It's different.
It's, it's a lot of work from, okay, I work here and now I'm running this, and I have every confidence that you'll do a great job. Anybody who wants to be a nurse, for one thing, is willing to take care of people, so that tells me something about yourself and that leadership role that you'll play, so I appreciate that, Ms. Lisa. Again, I'm for this and have been for this from the beginning because of those reasons and the difference you guys make in our community.
Thank you.
You have a good team.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Roskin.
I echo Deb's uh comments. But and I read the lease or the agreement and on page three, it says term. And uh the agreement began uh December first, two thousand twenty-two, but there's no end. It's every lease that I've ever seen, there's always a some kind of a termination or fifty years and just I didn't see a uh termination.
Sure. My understanding is it's an annual use agreement that has to be renewed. Um if if that was missed in there, we'll have to get with the attorneys to put that in. But I believe it's an annual, yeah, agreement. So.
Anyhow, thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to emphasize that the stabilization unit didn't open until July thirtieth. And so and that was just based on the staffing needs. So if you think about the opening of Pivot Point in February of two thousand twenty-three, and then July thirtieth is when the stabilization unit opened, there was quite a few months there where it wasn't fully operational. So if you think of the numbers of individuals coming in, and another big piece to point out is the number of self-referrals. So that's individuals coming in on their own. And I think Sheriff has demonstrated with the care campus, the numbers of people that come in on their own. And that's exactly what we never anticipated with the care campus. And which is also another positive outcome with Pivot Point. Means people are comfortable. They're coming in, they're utilizing their services. We're getting people assistance on the front end. So we're not having to um try to figure things out on the backside.
I I totally agree with that, Barry. You know, when this was on North Street, it was a much smaller place. And then we we put it in the care campus and we had some problems with one of the one entry deal. And this is making it more welcoming, more uh for people that are seeking the help. Because a lot of people know they're they have problems, but they don't know where to go. And that and what amazed me is this eleven counties. And that's exactly what this was supposed to do is kind of alleviate the going east river and and kind of working with the individuals on this side of the state, which I think that demonstrates its its doing. Because we had that summer study. And I don't know if Mr. Goodman was on that, but I know you were on that, Barry, and some other ones. Uh that's how it started out and expanded. So this, you are providing a well, a very much needed service in our community and and you're saving the tax dollars a lot by having this. I've heard some great stories. And I know it's hard to get people, employees, up to speed because we Travis and I are both on the complete health board. And we've heard some of the the difficulties that they've had. And they've tried to have hire some mental health uh counselors and so forth. So I know it's not an easy task to get up to full speed. We appreciate you. But any further comments? Lisa, last time?
I'm sorry?
Anything you'd like to finish with?
No, um just that, you know, we've worked really well with State's Attorney and the county and Health and Human Services. And together, we've all made a really good program.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
To approve the cooperative use agreement between Pennington County and West River Mental Health for the operation of Pivot Point.
Moved by Roskinect, seconded by Drews. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate the same aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this brings us up to item number sixteen. And all recognize Project Manager Kevin Burton. This is Penn County Jail Infrastructure and Tower Project Schematic Design Presentation by BKV.
Morning, Commissioner.
And this is for informational only.
That's correct. Yeah, we just wanted to update you. Um BKV group has finished the schematic design for the additional jail beds and our um start of the fix on the infrastructure of our main jail. Um so I'm not going to speak a whole lot. I'm going to turn it over to these capable gentlemen and let them uh present their things unless there's any questions for me.
I have a question, if I could, sir. Chair. So when we saw this on October nineteenth, was this option one, two, or three that you guys did?
This is reduced option number two. So this is um with the budget we were given, we um designed the building to fit within that budget. So we're building um the start of a third tower, one floor, and doing minimal reconstruction on the admin building just to connect the two for booking to the new um housing unit. And um then we're just addressing some of the lateral infrastructure. And um we're also taking a look at the security electronics that we're having a lot of trouble with in jail right now.
So option one was fifty-six and option two was forty-six, and you combined the two? So?
No, reduced option number two, which means we've reduced the scope of option two to make it fit within the twenty-eight million dollars that we have available.
And how much did you reduce it by?
We reduced it. I don't have those numbers in front of me, Ms. Hadcock. So we reduced it down to fit within the uh, you know, below our twenty-eight million dollar threshold.
Okay, because you were forty-six, forty-six, and that was lower. And now you've reduced forty-six to twenty-eight at this point.
Yeah, that was a pretty major reconstruction of the booking area and the first floor of the main jail. And we've moved those parts out of it.
Yeah. And you said twenty-eight to thirty-two on this, which isn't bad if we can keep in that range. I just, what I'm worried about is those hard costs. We haven't had hard costs on the the other building, the other two buildings at this point. And I'd kind of like to see those just to make sure when we're moving forward on another building that anything either we have left over or that we might have to put in. Um the only money we have at this point, if I'm correct, is jail money, unfortunately. So just want to start seeing hard numbers. Um I like the remodeling and the schematic design. I think it looks very professional, very nice, you guys. But um it comes down to looking at hard numbers for the first building. And we have another building. And that's three buildings that Buildings and Grounds is going to be trying to do as well as the other buildings. And I think that's putting a lot of hardship on those areas when we keep doing so many buildings at once. Not against any of the buildings in one sense, but um when you're setting budgets and you're trying to make sure that our Buildings and Grounds people and other people that are doing these projects are being able to take care of what we already have, those are my worries a little bit. So thank you.
Thank you. And this is a presentation of what you guys come up with.
Good morning. Excuse me, I guess everybody's hoarse today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bruce Schwartzman with BKV. Henry Pittner's with us. Katie Strong with us, our project manager as well. Um to rest the commissioners' mind at ease a little bit, we're going to be in front of you multiple times during this planning process. This is the first phase schematic design. Schematic design is refining the floor plan, the site plan, and what the building's going to look like from the exterior. And that's really kind of this first schematic phase. And ever since you approved our contract in December, the last three months, we've been working with the sheriff, Kevin Davis, and their team to really make sure that to develop everything in a way that operationally works best for the county and for the sheriff's office and make sure we're getting the most bang for the buck in the planning opportunities. We've also been weaving in our mechanical electrical firm, Skyline, here to make sure all those systems work. Our structural engineer, our civil, to again, make sure all the components are thought and everything's been thought out well because it's a very tight site and planned out well. The next phase will be design development. And when we finish that phase in the next three to four months, again, we'll come back in front of the commission and at that point in time have some hard-defined numbers where we're at within the process. Likewise, after we complete that phase, we go into construction document phase, another three to four-month period, and finalizing the documents, confirming the numbers again, and again, coming in front of you to say, here's where we're at, here's permission to to issue the project for bid, and then pull those bid numbers in. So there'll be multiple checkpoints. But in today's planning, to keep things concise, Henry's gonna gonna go over the site plan, going to show you that and where we're at with that, the various floor plans and a high-level conceptual plan, the exterior design. And then we'll get into next steps, which talks about hiring a construction manager at risk to help implement the project as well and answer any questions you all have. With that, I can move to plans.
Great. Here we go. If I can get it to go. Where'd it go? There it is. Got it. The wrong way. Uh great. Site plan, as you recall, um your existing jail, kind of on the left part of the uh the diagram, the annex at the bottom of the diagram. And so our new addition kind of fills that whole middle location where the existing one-story parking uh cover is for the sheriff in that area. Uh in the future, as the next phase, we would add the new vehicle Sallyport on the north side of the property, allowing bus access coming through St. Joe's, Joseph Street to, you know, right now, you can't get into that vehicle Sallyport because of the height and turning radius and things like that. So that's the kind of the location. The um we would anticipate having the same curb cut that exists on the north side of the parking structure, uh that allows the buses to make the turn properly. And then it provides access into that parking zone that currently exists uh uh in that area. The new the new piece on the site is uh as we were looking at how to structure mechanical space for the building, uh we would need that quadrant uh on the northwest side of the parking structure to be able to get a central plant in that'll support all the additions in the future as it comes through. So it's uh it's really hard to to start stacking mechanicals if you have to keep moving them. So it's a a cost consideration and gets gets the things where we need them to be. So that's kind of the site. Then plan-wise, can't show you a whole lot for security reasons. But uh this this level really shows kind of the extent of the of the new housing piece. Uh the the blue boxes in the corner are the recreation components, so that each of the housing units have that. And then uh the yellow kind of is circulation paths that connect back to the existing jail and to the annex area. Um and eventually gets you to other elevators and things like that.
So this floor is is broken into multiple quadrants, so that the facility has the ability to separate and segregate inmates on a higher level of separation than they currently have now for mental health and classification issues. And I think we have a maximum of one hundred and forty beds in this area.
Correct. The um and then just to kind of put it in context with adding the the mechanical space to the to the uh piece there, there are some exterior pieces mechanically and some um new transformer for electric. And uh you have the the generators and all of that. So there's there's a lot going on there. Uh but it's a it's a good a good way to deal with it overall. Then the mezzanine level, um again, in the the main existing jail, we're reconfiguring the um the control center, central control, um because we need new security electronics as we go and planning it for the future. Uh it then provides the housing that's there would remain. We would just separate those a little differently, um creating a new corridor in the yellow that gets us in and in and around. And uh and then the mezzanine level of the housing um is uh kind of represented on the right side. And um and then the piece you don't see at the end of the yellow is there's um in the mezzanine, there's an area for air handlers and some other mechanical pieces there that serve that floor specifically and get us what we need.
So, sir, what is the green triangle on the left-hand side then with the gray?
So this this here is the existing housing is around that zone. So we're reconfiguring that and also getting the laterals that are coming down as part of that infrastructure uh piece to to reroute that into the uh
Corridor.
Yeah, into the corridor and out into the sorority.
One of the big problems that has been facing your facility and the infrastructure, as you know, is is some of the plumbing lines have been horrendous. And and when they fail, Davis and and Kevin and his team have to deal with that on a regular basis. So one of the things we're trying to do is is oversize and handle that that lateral as it comes down, oversize it and get it out of the building to try to take some of the pressure off the other piping. It's not addressing all the other infrastructure that eventually needs to get done, but hopefully it's helping to minimize some of the issues that are going on.
So have we looked at the infrastructure underneath these with the used to be the cast iron pipe? Have we replaced all that in order to move forward on on building something above it? Or we're doing some of that with this project?
We're doing a little bit of that. What we're doing is, as they're coming down, we're collecting it at the bottom appropriately with new piping that'll remain. And then as we eventually do the remodeling above that, um it'll come, it'll stay in that position and and
Overload it with that cast that, yeah.
Yes. So that way at least we don't leak and we don't redo work twice, right? So it's we're trying to build every time we do something and make have it make sense.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Um, all right. Then um exterior image, uh this is always fun as we go through it. But this is a view of what it would look like if when it was finished with all four levels that go all the way up. Uh you can see we we kept a cornice line that kind of matches the existing jail on the right. Um same kind of material color as we come through, kind of the same limestone as the existing jail as we come through. We have a little bit bigger windows uh that are that go through our chase areas that get into the cells so we can get um better daylight in from that area. Uh to the left, um on the on that tower are the recreation areas of one of those blue corners that we were showing. Um so there's a lot of daylight going in there and that gets transferred into the day rooms um of of this of each of the housing units. So we're getting double kind of light going into the areas, which will be great for staff and and uh and for the those in custody as we come through.
And and just to correct one thing to it, we mentioned limestone, but it's really just a coloration of material to match the other materials.
Exactly.
We're not using one.
We are not using limestone, but it's a match match the existing coloring. Um at at the front where it says Pennington County Jail, that is the new vehicle Sallyport. Um so you would enter it from the right and come out on the left side from that. So it's a nice piece. And you kind of, when you look at the whole composition, the existing main jail on the right side is where the recreation is and all the glass. So it's it's a nice composition overall.
So that's a tunnel. Do you have, so you have garage door, not garage doors, but doors on each side? So people can't like sit in the tunnels or?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Not making a corridor in any sense in that area where people are going to hang out before
Correct.
They go enter in or out. It just goes straight with the building or how does it go?
So the the vehicle Sallyport that does have garage doors like you have now, we haven't talked about how to do anything else on the site yet.
Yes.
Um so, you know, currently you are coming directly in. Um so we anticipate that happening, but they can't get any farther than that location.
They can't get any fur-
Into the building.
How far can they get in the tunnel?
Yeah.
Just it's right at the start of the tunnel.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, that's a a future phase as we come through. So kind of a look um backwards on the on the the one-way. Uh but you can kind of see the rest of the campus with the the court annex and the court at the far end of it all. So it kind of fits everything. It's a little taller than the uh than the main jail. Um but we're we're uh we're within the ranges that we're supposed to be in code-wise. And then look the other way back towards this building. Uh so it fits in with the campus, we think, nicely. Uh and again, the coloration of all of that. Um what you can see as we go back, so the the front end of it matches everything um in terms of the color and all of that. As we go back, uh nobody's really going to see that area. So we're exploring other options to kind of look at different materials that we could use there, maybe a metal panel, things like that, to reduce the cost, put the money where it belongs on the public side. Um but then maintain a much more cost-effective uh area in the back, um which leads me to uh material concepts. So we're working uh right now on kind of looking at at a couple of options for the walls. The St. Joe's side, we would be looking at a precast concrete panel to match kind of the color like we talked about. Um but there is, you could do it in a in a panelized system also. And that isn't a precast. So we're looking at those. We'll be comparing those once the construction manager gets on board and our cost estimator kind of looks at those things. And then, as I mentioned, on the other three sides, we get to, could be the the precast again, depending on the cost, um but it uh options of a corrugated panel or composite panel in the back. So all of those, we've talked with uh Davis and Kevin, and uh we're we're all on board for any of these right now. We'll we'll see where it prices and uh and show you our recommendations at that point. So these are just examples of how uh, you know, the are just examples of how, uh, you know, the, on the left, uh, would be the pre-cast panel that looks, looks like limestone and, uh, the two panel variations on the, uh, the right-hand side. Uh, so what does it look like for the first phase without all of the rest of it? So that, that's what it looks like. Uh, one story. Um, it's, it's fairly tall, uh, to match up with floor heights in the future as we go through so that we always connect to the main jail, uh, as we're going. Um, so no, no vehicle Sallyport in this one. Uh, that'll be the next phase, but, uh, um, but that's kind of the first piece of it. When you look down the street again, uh, you can kind of see how it works. Um, uh, the roof will be interesting because we, we don't want anything on them for the future because that's the floor for the future phases as we come through. And, um, then kind of a street view looking down, uh, St. Joseph's, uh, back towards, uh, this building here. So that is, uh, the outside. Any questions, thoughts on that?
Any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lawson.
Last year, I knew we were going to run into this jail problem. So I researched newspaper articles, uh, looking for other townies that are having the same problem that we are. And in my research, I found 10 jails that are under construction and just using the information on the, uh, that I found in the article, uh, the average cost per bed was 200,000. And some of these things, uh, went way above.
Yeah.
When I say bed, the number of beds that we will create, what's that going to cost the county per bed? And actually based on the numbers that I've got, it'll be 189,000, which actually falls below this median of my research. And then if you put that on a per square foot basis, uh, that's 1,400 a square foot, uh, based on the parameters that I have. And 14, a new office building in Rapid City is going to cost you 400 a square foot. If we can do this for 1,400 a square foot, I think we're, uh, we're on the right track.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I like to break things down per unit because it really makes more sense to the general public.
Yeah. And I think the, uh, when you look at it per bed, uh, it's, it's always hard to understand how much other work was involved with that in site and mechanicals and things like that. So it's, but we're in the range. I think you're, you're correct on that. So, uh, um, well, the market's always interesting and, uh, um, you know, we have a few examples in-state, uh, and we've been working towards that level. So I think we're, uh, at this point, I think we're, uh, we're solid where we are.
Well, thank you guys.
We have one, one more piece for you. Um, the, uh, the next steps.
Yeah. So, so as we, as we continue, um, the sheriff and Kevin and Davis have already started the conversation with the city. Um, you know, you know, we can't, we got to make sure the entire complex works and part of the, the vehicle Sallyport in the, on the north side, as it goes towards St. Joe's, starts to encroach into the right way.
Right.
So the city has been on board. Um, they've started that communication. I'm sure Kevin could get into that more, but it's, they're, they're right in line and it's looking very positive. So there's no hiccups there. As we mentioned, we're completing this phase this week and submitting the documents again for the sheriff's office and Kevin and Davis to really get into it, see if they see anything as we're going forward. We've been meeting with him every two weeks, every week on a general call. So we've been having regular meetings to make sure we're heading in the right direction. The next large component is going to be high, finding a, a construction manager to, to hire for the project. And you can see the sequence of events is, it's going to be advertised from, uh, March 5th to the 7th or on those two dates. There'll be a pre-propulsion conference on March 21st. Uh, they will have up until March 28th to provide any questions. We'll provide any follow-up answers to their questions and then proposals are due on April 4th. We would present that to the, the findings of those, uh, proposals to the building commission on April 9th, uh, have interviews between April 14th, 15th and April 16th. Uh, again, meet with the building commission for their recommendation on April 23rd and then bring that back to you all on May 7th. And then again, on May 21st for implementation, implementation of their contract. And the CM, uh, construction manager at risk will be very helpful for this project, especially in a, in, in a, in a tight site that connects to an existing building. You get a lot of more hands-on involvement than you would with a general contractor. So it's, we've, I would say probably 95% of the projects we're doing around the country right now are done with construction managers. So we think you'll get a good value for that.
Well, thank you for giving us the timeline too, the process, what you're going through. I think the commission needed that. But I also like the, the part where you're already working on the second phase where the right away, because I, it was obvious you were in the right way, took out, you're going to have to take out some parking.
Yes.
And so forth. And that's going to take some consideration from the city, but, uh, it's best to get those talks going now than 20 years from now.
Yeah. And Commissioner, even, even the floor planning, Henry and his, and a lot of his concept planning is looking at everything that's going to happen in the future phase. Because the last thing we want to do is we do a, a great design and great plan for you in this first phase and then things aren't properly thought out for this future phases. So, um, we've been working through that diligently with the team.
I agree. I'm, because our biggest concern was the, the horizontal plumbing too. I mean, and so we're, we're dealing with that.
Sure. Ms. Haggar. So we have a construction manager. Do you have a different construction manager or you're using a construction manager risk or something you said?
So there's no construction manager currently on the project. What, you have your internal coordinator, your internal planner.
Who's a construction manager?
Yeah. Who's, who helps to do that. But the construction manager, ultimately what happens, kind of the difference with a construction manager is they're involved early in the process. So a construction management process, construction management process versus a general contractor, you hire the construction manager early on in pre-design. So they get involved, they're, they're on the project, their fee is locked in, they're on the project, they're there for constructability reviews. Oh, that makes sense. No, we could look, do another material, it'd be cheaper. Here's what the schedule is. So they help us with constructability, scheduling and cost. And they're part of the team through the balance of the design. So they'll be right with us side by side. So it's basically the three-legged stool. You've got your architectural engineer, you've got construction manager, and you have your own in-house staff who are helping to guide and manage the project. Then when the project goes out to bid, instead of going to a general contractor and getting a number, that construction manager is then distributing the documents to multiple subcontractors. You know, so plumbing and, and sprinkling and detention equipment contractor. And so they're, they're getting all those subcontractor bids, pulling them together and helping to pull together the lowest combination of bids from those subcontractor bids. And then once the project moves forward.
Right.
You have this full-time individual that's on site, helping to make sure all the things are, are being scheduled and planned appropriately as the project proceeds.
So my husband is a construction manager, a project manager, but that's what he does.
Yes.
For jobs or what he's done for jobs. I just wondered the difference between a construction manager, he's supposed to be a project manager. Um, before, when we did the, the jobs, we didn't need to have a construction manager. We had Mike. And he could do a lot of that stuff. So, and he has engineering and stuff like that. So, um, I understand. So how much is the difference on a construction manager? Or you'll bring those numbers, how much we're paying another construction manager?
Well, the, the overall budget that we've talked about for the project will include those costs. So it's not above and beyond it. It would be within those total costs.
And you'll tell us what that cost is on that construction manager?
And we don't, until we get them on board, we don't know that. But that's what would be presented in the May timeline.
Well, it's nice to see those hard numbers and have someone bring those hard numbers. And I think that construction manager, project manager, that's kind of their job description. So I appreciate that.
And at some point in time, and they'll present this too, Commissioner, even before we finalize and, and bid, most of the time you'll have a guaranteed maximum. So the general, the, the construction manager will look at the project. Once we've gotten past design development, probably in the construction documents, when they have a good solid handle on where the numbers are, they'll present, here's what the maximum product number's going to be on the project.
And that's my bottom line with the jail, with the buildings, the other two buildings is those hard numbers are huge before you move to the next step. That way you know you have the money. You have unforeseen costs. That's, that's stuff that happens, but you always try to put some reserves in there. And that's my intention with doing buildings or, or what we do, not against buildings in Pennington County, just doing what you guys are doing with that project manager or construction manager and making sure those hard costs are done ahead of time, instead of getting stuck in between going, okay, I think this is going to cost more. And then it costs more to, no offense, rehire you guys to redo it again and make a different plan every time. So it makes a huge difference on savings.
We, we don't want to, we don't want any u-ohs. We missed this. We, that, we don't like that. We don't like to come in front of you with, oh, we missed this and now we need to look at this.
Guys, I've done a good job, um, on your, uh, stuff so far. And then, like I said, I just didn't know if you're doing project one, two, or three, or how you're moving it. And Kevin moved that forward. So, um, it's kind of what you guys are doing. And that makes a, a big difference. Trying to incorporate what we need and what the needs are, not what, not the, you know what I mean? I want this, but we need this right now. So thank you.
And what kind of funds you have to do it right now? I mean, that's really what we've been working with through the whole study is how do you do this over time based on funds available?
Well, we've been waiting a while for this jail. So, um, that's why I said, let's get those other buildings good to go and then make sure that this building is taken care of and move forward on the infrastructure and what we need for the county jail. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all.
Any final comment, guys?
We're, uh, we're having fun and we'll keep on moving. We'll, uh, look forward to seeing you in about three months again.
Well, we appreciate the timelines and the clarification. That helps us out considerably. And that's the public know what's, where we're at and where we're going.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
Next, next this brings us up to item 17. This is the agreement for, whoa, hold on, we got speaker. Okay. Uh, this is the agreement and, uh, for operation and use of the fairgrounds, property and buildings, uh, to be placed on the March 19th, uh, 2024 meeting agenda. Uh, I just wanted to say, you know, we did announce last month that it was going to be this month, but what happened, we had some unforeseen things happen with the two boards and our attorneys being able to sit down and get together to go through it. So we have moved it to, uh, the next meeting this month. And, uh, the agenda for public notice, it will be placed on the March 19th agenda for public comment and board action. The board was, we will still take public comment today. So we're not going to let that go. You guys made it tough to be here and we know we had the agenda out and we had this signed, but, uh, I, we will take public comment. But I just wanted to say it was unforeseen stuff that happened with getting them together to come up with the agreements and wanted to let you guys know that upfront. We're, we're not trying to kick it down their own. Okay. Uh, Ray, this is the first speaker request form that I do now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Ray Lautenschlager. It appears that Central State's Fair officials are still hoping that county attorneys will find a way to circumvent the law by writing into the contract language that would authorize them to disarm law-abiding citizens at the fair, if not the entire fair, then at least in the grandstands during concerts. Now, we understand why they want this authority. They're concerned about public safety and with the best of intentions. There's only two problems with that. Number one, it's against the law as well as the constitution. And number two, disarming law-abiding citizens has never made anybody safer. It should by now be abundantly obvious to everyone that gun control doesn't work. All the best efforts to create gun-free zones in public schools have done nothing to prevent school shootings, which continue unabated. The same holds true for well-intentioned efforts to prevent mass shootings by banning guns in malls and other public places. No amount of laws will ever succeed in preventing evil actors from harming innocent but disarmed people. No amount of law enforcement presence will ever effectively protect innocent people who have been denied the ability to protect themselves. Anyone who still thinks that you can enhance public safety by making it impossible for the public to protect themselves needs to pull their head out of the sand and look around at the evidence. This kind of thinking is a utopian dream that never was reality and never will be. There is something more that needs to be considered beyond the fact that banning guns has never succeeded in preventing shootings in the past. This policy may actually increase the risk that they will happen in the future. Gun-free zones may actually attract the very thing they are trying to prevent because those with evil intent often choose a location where they know people will not be able to defend themselves. And if this happens, those officials who insist on going ahead with such a policy will have the blood of innocent victims on their hands. Our state motto says, under God, the people rule. The people of South Dakota acting through their elected representatives in the legislature have already debated these very issues and have decided to trust the law-abiding citizens of the state with arms so that they can provide for their own security. In other words, it has been recognized and decided that this is the best way to ensure the public safety. And this decision has been codified into the laws of South Dakota. As county commissioners, your job is to insist that these laws are followed by all county officials, including those at Central State's Fair. To allow firearm regulations which are more stringent than current state law is to overturn the will of the people. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Ray, could you give a copy to that to Holly and then we'll print it out so every commissioner can have it?
He's over there.
You don't need it back, do you?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Hi, Jay.
Jay Alderman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners. Uh, just wanted to follow up. As you recall, last meeting, the, uh, parties that are working on this agreement came to the podium and expressed exactly the opposite of what I just heard, that they're not going to enter into an agreement that's going to take lawful firearms out of the hands of lawful, law-abiding citizens. Uh, the truth of the matter is, we're extremely busy and we got behind on getting this contract to you today. It's that simple, just being honest with you. And so right now it's in the hands of the Central State's Fair attorney and their board looking at. It'll come back to me. I'm sure it might go back a time or two. Uh, and then we're hoping to have it to, uh, Holly by the 13th, which is the Wednesday preceding the, uh, Tuesday 19th meeting. So you can all see it and hopefully vote on it. Um, but it's, it's not at all as I just heard and I wanted to make the public aware of that. And I know you already know that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, Jay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lawson.
Gee, I have a question. And this purely goes to the question of, since this is something that the citizens have asked about, but also I understand contract negotiations being an executive session. Is that contract going to be something that's going to be out in the public? Because once it's signed, it's out in the public. Just, I'm just wondering that, that's going to come back to us to make decision on. Is that going to be an executive session or is it going to be open for the public to see the contract to?
It may well go into executive session initially on that day and then come out.
Gotcha. But that, but that contract will be in a public package. So it's.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Um, it'll be up to you whether you want to, uh, adjourn to, uh, executive session to talk about any particular piece of it or, or provision of it first. So in theory, you'd have an executive session before it's on the agenda for approval. Or you can skip executive session altogether and go right to that agenda and have your entire discussion in the public. That's entirely your choice. But that's our, that's our hope and our goal to have that, uh, long-awaited document to you by Tuesday, the 19th.
Thank you very much, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's been a long discussion and I think it should be in the public if we're going to have a discussion on it because they have been coming and we kept saying that we were going to put it in the public. So I don't see any reason why you'd put it in executive session at all. So that's just my opinion. Um, it's been long awaited by the citizens and otherwise, and, uh, it's okay for them to speak on something. That doesn't have to be our final decision as a board, but it's nice to have that input and have it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have another speaker request form from Sarah Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commission. Thank you for your service. Um, I think my speech is a moot point at the moment until we see the contract. So I will speak in two weeks, um, if we get the opportunity to see it. So I have nothing to say today at this point until we see the contract. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, folks. With that being said, we will move on to item 18 with, and I'll recognize, uh, items from equalization, Director Shannon Rittenberger.
Good morning, Shannon Rittenberger. There's several abatement requests in front of you. These are the typical thing that we do this year. Uh, several trailer houses that aren't there, weren't there, and, uh, several properties purchased by a government entity.
Chair.
Ms. Haggar.
Move to approve the abatement applications for year 2023 as follows. Presidential Hospitality LLC parcel number. Presidential Hospitality LLC parcel number zero eight zero zero three, sorry, number eight zero zero three four zero five, ninety-two dollars, ninety-six cents, number eight zero zero three four one zero seventy-five thirty-four, number eight zero zero three four oh six, one twenty-five oh two, number eight zero zero three four oh seven, numbers, uh, seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents, number eight zero zero three four zero eight, one hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents, number eight zero zero three four zero nine, two hundred and three fifty-eight. City Rapid City parcel number seven one three three six, forty-three dollars, forty-eight cents. Secretary Veteran Affairs parcel number fifty-nine six nine eight, five hundred and ten fifty-eight. CCA T T LLC parcel number seven three one eight three, two thousand two oh three forty, and Ellsworth Development Authority parcel number two four two three seventy-one seventy-two.
It's been moved by Haggard.
Second.
Secured by Roskineck. Any discussion, any follow-up, Shannon? Nope. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next, we come to item number nineteen, items from the Highway Department, and I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commission. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Uh, up in front of you is our bridge inspection resolution. This is a yearly deal that, uh, we need to get the state that they participate, uh, in, uh, funding for our bridge inspections. Um, we've selected the KLJ. Uh, I don't remember what KLJ stands for now. Um, but we've selected KLJ Engineering for our, uh, inspections again this year. Uh, we talked in-house, uh, about maybe looking at a different engineering firm, but there's a lot of things in play that we have with KLJ currently. Um, and we've been happy with their service. So we saw no reason to, to change, um, engineering firms at this time. So uh, the last five years, we've spent about twenty thousand dollars a year on this. Uh, the state kicking in about eighty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars overall. So, um, our bridges are required by the, the federal government to be inspected at a minimum every two years. So we do about half and half. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Joe? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
Move to approve the bridge reinspection program, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three dash zero five dash one. Requesting the South Coast Department of Transportation to hire KLJ Engineering to perform Benjent County's twenty twenty-four bridge inspections.
Thank you.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commission.
Next, that brings us up to item number twenty. These are items from the Human Resources. And I'll recognize, uh, Carol Bancroft and I think Scott Guffey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. That we come before you today to talk about the issue that we encountered last year with the seasonal positions for natural resources and the inability to hire with the DBM rating where they were classified. So Scott and I worked very closely together to do a comprehensive review, which does include looking at the position description as well as a market analysis. So I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thanks, Carol. Uh, Scott Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Director. As Carol mentioned, we've kind of fallen behind on our seasonal wages to be competitive with, uh, both city, uh, state and fellow counties and, uh, federal. Uh, we're just not getting a lot of applicants. Last spring, we advertised and didn't get any applicants till July. And by that time, to get somebody trained up and, uh, tested to be certified to apply pesticides, it was simply too late. Luckily, I had four returning last year that helped and were able to get through. Um, this year, I, I know a couple of them are not coming back. So I'm definitely going to have to hire a couple of new seasonals this year. So in order to be able to do that, uh, we're requesting to, to reclass from an A thirteen on all our seasonal positions to a, I mean, an A twelve to an A thirteen. Um, that would be a starting wage of fifteen eighty-eight, which would be a lot more competitive in the market today. So.
Chair.
Let me say, Haggard.
Everyone, I appreciate you bringing this to the public in a public meeting. I've been saying that, um, it's a reclass and a step increase. Uh, we've been doing these a little bit differently. Um, I'm not against this because I also looked into some of this when you did the market analysis and I asked a few people about what you were doing, Scott. And it makes sense because at this point, paying people thirteen seventy-three, it's not going to give you anybody, um, they'll go find something else. So I appreciate even the fifteen eighty-eight is not uncomparable to something that has been going on in our community for a while. And like I said, I checked other people that have, uh, companies that do weed spraying and different stuff. So you are in those ratings. So um, I'm in agreement with this today. And again, I appreciate you bringing it up front.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Luster.
Thank you, Scott. I mean, we sat on the board and discussed a little bit. And, um, do you think you're going to be able to, I mean, how many of you lost to Rapid City because of the higher rate and how many do you think you're going to be able to recover back?
Well, that's.
Help fill some of the roles?
Yeah, that is our main competition on, on this is probably the city Rapid City. So if we can get out there early and get it publicized, uh, hopefully we can get some, um, you know, retired school teachers or school teachers work great for our position. So, um, hopefully we can get it on their radar and maybe we get somebody interested in that. Or, or college kids work good too. Um, so they have to be, in order to apply pesticides, you gotta be at least eighteen, uh, it's a state requirement. So, but, uh, hopefully we can get some interest in it.
All right. Thank you.
My, my, my comment, Scott, is, well, first of all, this is about a position and so forth. It's, we're not talking about an individual. And I think, as you stated, uh, you know, these people go through training. You have to hire them, train them, all that in order to get them. What made me thought when I was looking at this earlier was it seems like, correct me if I'm wrong, the Highway Department created some different incentives for returning, uh, flaggers. Is that something maybe we should be looking at too? Because I think what your, but those positions are going to be unique. You could get, you know, semi-retired people or you're going to get, uh, school-wage people. If the retired ones there and you train them and they come back every year, you know, is there an incentive that you're thinking about that we could lock a few, you know, lock some in for five years?
Yeah, generally when, uh, in the past, I, I got one gentleman that's, he'll be back with, uh, for, I think it's twenty-eighth summer, spring for us. So what we generally do when they come back, we do give them a, a bump in the wage scale. So they go up to the next grade. So that's, that's an incentive for them to come back. And that's kind of been the only one, but it, we prefer people to come back because then they already know the system, they're already certified. They can hit the ground running right off in the spring. So.
Yeah.
And it, the semi-retired people are, are perfect if we can find those folks or school teachers.
Yeah. I never thought about the school teachers. But great. Any further questions for?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskineck.
I'll move to through the DBMA thirteen rating for the three natural resources positions, weed and pest applicator, staller, and enforcement technician.
Second.
Moved by Roskineck, secured by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, this brings us up to twenty B, which is, uh, new job position requests.
So what we have done is worked with Eric Witcher, our public defending defender, as well as Laura Retzel, our state's attorney, and analyzed as far as a new position that would really support them with their needs within the department as our community has evolved. So I'll turn it over to them.
Good morning, Commissioners. Eric Witcher, public defender. And so, uh, as Carol had mentioned, we've got two new positions here. One, the major crimes deputy public defender, and then the mirror position at the state's attorney's office, the major crime state's attorney. The reason that we're bringing this forward is, as our memo, memo outlines, there is an extreme shortage of both public defenders as well as state's attorneys around the country. We are working diligently to recruit and retain as best as we can. You know, as I look at on the defense side of, of what I would like to have for a career with attorneys is about the first two years in magistrate court where they learn the basics. How to review discovery, how to quickly and accurately, how to interview with clients, and then all the trial skills and motion skills necessary to do the basics of the job. The next, uh, three to four years, you really want them to then start doing felony work where the stakes are much higher. People are going to be facing up to ten, fifteen years in the state penitentiary. And, and then they, at tour, after two to three years, you want them to start doing second-chairing really serious crimes, first-degree rapes, homicide cases, et cetera. So you, you start to, uh, where the stakes are even higher, where people are facing up to life in prison. The, the challenge is retaining people that long. So once you reach that four to five-year mark, they really have nowhere else to go if there's not a management position available or it comes available within our offices. And, uh, they can just, we just really can't compete financially or even close, uh, with the private sector. So what this position would do is give us really two opportunities. One, it creates a ladder internally for those that are really dedicated to this line of work in public service, to give them just a little bit more of a bump, something to work towards and anticipate, and a recognition of how valuable they are to the public. Um, anytime you have a defense attorney that can just step right in on day one and accept a homicide case and handle it in a confident way is, is tremendous. And it's the same for the state's attorney's office. Having a prosecutor that can effectively, uh, handle a homicide case is of course vital, uh, to public interest. So, and it also gives us an opportunity to recruit from the outside and, and to bring in a lot, what we call lateral transfer to somebody who may be in private practice, um, has the experience, it might be, they might be in another state and be able to wave in, um, after five, just so the commission is aware, after, after you've practiced for five years in certain states, you can then wave in without taking the bar exam in the state of South Dakota. So anybody who would qualify for this position has seven years of experience. So they could wave into the state of South Dakota. Let's say they were practicing in Colorado or Minnesota or some of the other states that have what is called reciprocity, reciprocity with the state of South Dakota. So they could just wave right in. Um, so that would give us an opportunity to, to try to, uh, recruit them, those, uh, very skilled and experienced attorneys as well. Um, to try to, to try to, uh, meet the needs that we have here in the county. So with that, I'll stand for questions and turn it over to State's Attorney Retzel.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Retzel, your state's attorney. Mr. Witcher has adequately explained the situation that our offices are experiencing. The retention of quality attorneys in addition to the recruitment issues that we've been facing is a tremendous challenge. And crime is not going away in our communities and very violent crime is at the forefront of all of our minds this month, having faced back-to-back homicides. Those cases are both being prosecuted by the state's attorney's office and defended by the public defender's office. And I would hope that we would want to see the very best in both of our offices handling those cases. So in order to be able to both draw and retain quality people, we have to be able to pay them accordingly. And the creation of this position will allow us to do that. Um, you know, just to give you a tiny bit of a flavor of how difficult these cases are, our top prosecutors and top defenders are working between ten and thirty hours of overtime every week. That's just standard. And they're paid far below their counterparts in private practice. An average median salary for a prosecutor nationally is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. My chief deputies are barely making that. I only make slightly, I only make about ten thousand dollars more than that as the top prosecutor in my office. It's so easy for defenders and prosecutors to slide out of our office into positions that are so much less stressful and so much more higher paying. They're there because they care about the work. But at some point, the extreme stress of homicide, sexual assault, child sexual assault, prosecution and defense becomes too high when you're not compensated for that. So the creation of these positions as major crimes recognition will really help us with both recruitment and retention. And we're prepared to answer any questions you have about those positions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Luster.
I have a couple of questions. So, and either one of you can answer because they probably apply to both of you. Um, but in general, so I know you're not gaining an FTE. So this is converting it to FTE. So, um, what FTE, and I don't know if it fits in this way. So if I'm not asking the question right, I hope you understand what I'm getting at. What FTE are you converting and what was it? Was it, and it's going to a C fifty-two or is it a C fifty-two type, uh, FTE? That's my first question.
He doesn't have one.
So, uh, is my, I think I understand your question, Commissioner Lassiter. So this doesn't create another FTE. It just creates another position within the county in which if we have an employee who qualifies, has the seven years requisite experience, we could, uh, move them to this position potentially as well as hopefully recruit some folks that are in private practice or in another state, uh, to join us here at the county. You know, uh, Ms., Ms. Retzel's either full or very close to full right now, but we're down five, you know, public defenders right now. So I'm hopeful that this would allow me to recruit some folks in. And I have some people in my office who would qualify. I know some are waiting to see what this commission decides, whether they stay with us or not. So it's, it's of vital importance to my office.
Mr. Chair, follow-up for that one. Then if, if you don't mind me clarifying, so you have somebody that might be in a, and I'm just going to say a stupid number here because I don't, I don't know how your structure is. Some, somebody could be in like a C forty-nine that meets this criteria. And then if they met that criteria, then they would move from a C forty-nine into this job position that's a C fifty-two. I just want to make sure I'm understanding how that would flow.
Exactly right. If they're qualified, yes.
If they're, if they're qualified, okay. So you're not, I don't want to say that you're eliminating an FTE. You're just taking a FTC, FTE spot that doesn't necessarily have a C whatever or a B whatever designated, and you're just turning one into at least this minimum. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it.
Commissioner Lassner, Lassiter, can I answer the same question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because my intention is just a little bit different. So not only am I full-staffed, but I'm plus one, taking advantage of your unfunded FTE position that I've been granted, given the unique hiring cycle of attorneys. My intention is to create a major crimes unit designating three attorneys and offering up an internal application process for people to apply for three internal positions that will be converted into major crimes prosecutors. I believe I have five, maybe six attorneys that would be eligible under the criteria of the job description. They would apply internally and be selected for that position.
Okay. And, um, Mr. Chair, another follow-up question. So before creating these positions, was there a wage study to determine, is this the appropriate level to place them at? I mean, I know we've got a C fifty-two, but is this kind of, I don't think anything's ever going to be comparable to civilian world. We, we know that because you just gave a briefing about, you know, private practice is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for, for some of these guys. What, what did we do to look at that, see where we're going to be at, to make sure this is going to be that appealing for them? Does that make sense?
Yes, Commissioner Lassiter. It is not where we would want it to be financially. Quite simply, it's all we've got, um, in the existing wage scale. Um, it will be our effort as part of the, um, ongoing work that the compensation committee is doing to be able to place this more appropriately on the correct wage scale as part of that ongoing work. But this is the best that we have right now.
Gotcha. And just one final question, sir. Um, all of this, this never takes into consideration, you know, the thirty-two, twenty-seven, twenty. That doesn't take in consideration if the individual who gets into that position, uh, benefits and things of that nature, right? That's a whole different additional cost.
Right. So the number that you see on, um, Ms. Bancroft's memorandum is the number one starting position on that scale without benefits. So our people, if selected for that position, would be placed where they're appropriately deserving of positioning on that horizontal line based on their years of experience and where they would receive a pay increase, um, assuming that they are current county employees to the location where they would get a raise.
So maybe like a s, a ten-year employee that meets all the criteria might actually be, again, stupid number here, might be a C eight, sixteen, uh, sixty-four or something of that nature.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So Commissioner Laster, and I can, our promotions policy allows them to go up to step twelve for either new hire or promoting somebody into that position.
Okay.
Chair.
Thank you.
Ms. Haggard.
So is it major crimes? Isn't that felonies? And you, Ms. Laura, and we talked about this beforehand, um, And you, Ms. Laura, and we talked about this beforehand, um so don't you already have felony attorneys?
So the designation is felonies range from a class six felony, which is very low level, punishable by two years in prison, all the way up to a class A felony, which is punishable by the death penalty. So Mr. Whitaker and I are designating major crimes as being primarily class three and above. So very serious felonies punishable by very high level penalties of serious periods of incarceration, um twenty-five years and above.
And I like your idea of having a team of three people because it takes distress. They can visit, they can kind of move together, so I'm not against this. I just don't know, at this point, adding more FTS or changing. You're not adding, but um Mr. Whitaker says he will not be adding FT, but does not have the funding in the twenty twenty-four budget. So if you're five down, five down in your department, can't you use or use the funding from one of the FTEs there?
As far as, I I guess, so we, yeah, we're gonna have, if we move anybody on this scale, we'll have plenty of, we'll have plenty of money within our twenty twenty-four budget because of our short staffing at the moment.
Well, that's why I'm asking, are you, are you going to add another FTE? Or are you going to keep one that you have? Because that makes a difference for my decision on budgeting.
Okay, so let let me, let me back up a little. So we are, uh, we have the ability to have twenty-one and a half uh uh FTEs for attorney positions.
Right.
We currently have fifteen on staff.
Okay.
And one and a half of those are unfunded. So we're five short funded FTEs and six and a half short, you know, what we have, we could flex up to. So, you know, and looking at, you know, each month, let's see, without, you know, being down five lawyers, I mean, that's thirty, you know, between thirty-seven and forty thousand dollars that we're not expending right now. So we've already, we're already, I know I'm going to be giving back, you know, ninety thousand dollars essentially with, you know, unless we expend on a few other things already in just two months.
Well, if you were, you were short last, well, you were short last year then because you weren't right on the budget.
Yes, we gave hundreds of thousands back.
This year, you haven't filled those positions, so you'd still have the money. The bottom line was, was you, I like the idea of using one of our FTEs that are here instead of hiring out. And that um it would make sense for your major crimes people to work with, with Laura's in that sense, for defenders, just to learn some of uh some of those areas. Can someone tell me, what's the difference between a public defender and a state's attorney? Do you guys do more felonies? Is that the difference, Ms. Laura?
I charge people with crimes. Eric defends those people against my people. So it's state attorney versus the public defender.
I just want, then you don't want to do what I just said.
Despite how it appears we get along, we we are adversaries in the courtroom.
No, I think you play as a team and I think you work together to try to find the best solution. I've seen both of you, um and I've seen you guys as a team, so um I'm gonna, I'm gonna say you do well together. I just thought that you kind of worked as a team with maybe putting, okay, I don't go to courtrooms and I've only been in court once. So I'll be up straight and I've been watching you guys and tried to go to some of your court cases, but you're not there at the same time, so I wouldn't have known that.
No, we're definitely there at the same time on opposite, opposite sides of the room.
Yes. I haven't seen, I haven't seen that yet. I'll have to watch that. My bottom line is, is market analysis, wage comparable, we've been doing that and that's our future, uh what we're supposed to do for a wage scale. And in this case, it seems like with the DBM ratings, and I just talked to you, Laura, one of your ladies might be going in there, which makes sense. She's gonna be taking less pay, so then you'll be coming back for more of a supplement. Do you still have that money in there?
Um, so I discussed that with um HR. And the the difference is this number that you see on the memorandum is the number one position. And because she's been here so long, she would be much further along on the page, the pay scale.
Yes, and you have the funding to move someone up into that with a different pay scale with the benefits.
Well, I turned back nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars last year, Commissioners. And I am confident that I will run a tight budget again this year.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
I appreciate that.
Done?
Yep.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve adding one new major crimes deputy public defender and one major crimes deputy state's attorney in twenty twenty-four, a DBM C fifty-two, base pay three thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents biweekly, update the position listing on file.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. My comment was, what I'd like to say is, this goes to show the very different needs that we have in two different departments. We have one that's full, who has people that she'd like to, the position to create for them to to show that we're gonna move somebody up, create that position. And it will, where the public defender's office, it may help in recruiting somebody to come in who has the experience that they need for being short. So I think the two of you working together on this was vital because it's gonna help both departments one way, a little bit different from the other, but it it's still uh in the best interest of our community. So with that, I do have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Oskinak.
After all this discussion, I I wonder what the world would be like without crime. I mean, we'd have a lot of unemployed people. Anyhow, I'm support this.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners.
Next, we have item number twenty-one um from Eric Whitaker again, case management system software.
Yes, thank you. Again, Eric Whitaker, public defender. What we're requesting in in this line item is, is for us to be able to purchase a new case management system. Just to give you a sense of our current system, it's it's been built internally by um by our IT department. And uh they've done an excellent job. However, just maintaining that to getting software engineers is, you know, it's a challenge. As well as what's available in the marketplace now is quite extraordinary. We've, we've done a thorough search, um we've created a little ad hoc committee um and have had multiple meetings with several software companies. We really settled on Filevine. We thought that it could do, well, we're confident can do everything that we we need it to do um and more. Uh the level of efficiency that this will create uh for attorneys and staff is 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 pretty remarkable. We've, you know, I think we've been really tough negotiators. They started at a hundred thousand dollars annually and we got them to fifty-four and we get that guaranteed for three years. And uh but it also gives us some flexibility that, you know, because like, you know, I, this, we, at the end of the day, we do have a political body that makes a decision every year on budget. And if, so if you weren't to, you know, as we go through budget cycle and you weren't to budget for this in twenty twenty-five, I could get out of it uh as well. So what, there's two numbers here. Fifty-four thousand dollars is the annual fee to have the the software. Twenty-seven thousand is the the build out and the data migration from, you know, all of the data that we have going back to nineteen seventy-two and all the case files and all the information that we have within it, uh to migrate that from our current system is into this new system. There's actually a different company, um there's a company that that does simply for Filevine, migrates it um this data over. And that's the one time, twenty-seven thousand dollars and ongoing, it'll be fifty-four thousand after, at least for the next three years. So for twenty twenty-four, again, I have the money in our budget easily for this because of our our unfunded FTEs that we, you know, or the, or FTEs that we have not filled right now. So I do not need any uh additional budget to uh for twenty twenty-four. And as we go through the twenty twenty-five budget cycle, I will then be including for next year uh the the fifty-four thousand dollars as part of our ongoing expenses. It's, this is, you know, these new software programs, it will be able to merge uh really seamlessly with the UJS. It's gonna actually be transferring data in from the UJS system directly into our program. So as far as, you know, we're currently typing information, this is like dates of birth and et cetera, three different times. This will go from that to zero, just as, just to give you an example of of in in an open filing situation.
Chair.
You go ahead.
He's right in the middle.
Just a question.
Yes.
Um so CMS, the case management software, how much was that one time cost?
So that was, that was built by the IT department over fifteen years. So that it, so our current case management system was built internally by software engineers here in Benton County.
Okay, and then the last year that was spent sixty thousand on that, is what I looked up on the budget. And I looked at, there was a motion to um for your cost on your case management system for sixty thousand last year. What was that for?
On our budget for sixty thousand dollars.
Yep, it was a stuff we vote, it was something we voted on for case management software last year.
For the public defender's office?
Yep.
So going back, I I'm not. Just not sure what that would be.
Hold on, we got Lori coming up.
Oh.
Hi, Lori Wager, IT Director. There might be a little bit of confusion because you had that old software that you were trying to work with. So IT created a software here in-house and um Public Defenders has been trying to get off of that software so that we don't have to support it anymore. Back in two thousand and I want to say twenty.
Twenty twenty.
They started working with a company called Legal Edge. And Legal Edge horribly overpromised and underdelivered. They, these guys have been working super hard trying to get Legal Edge to produce what they said they were gonna produce. And they haven't, they just have not done it. So maybe that's what the sixty was kind of slotted for that software, because they've been good to go live for like a year now.
Yeah.
So you probably had some budget money slotted for that.
That that might be the case. I know we got some leftover COVID dollars to expend for that original build out from from them back in twenty twenty. And we haven't paid them another dime since then.
I'll have to look, because I just went through it and saw that you spent sixty thousand and it was a motion. And when I was looking through some other stuff that I had to find and that you spent sixty thousand on new software for the public defender's office, and that was in twenty twenty-three. So um I I apologize, I should have printed it off. I just thought maybe you'd know what you spent it on, but.
Was that spent dollars or was that budgeted dollars?
No, that was spent. It wasn't in the budget line items. It actually was a motion for um case management system or case management software to uh expend another sixty thousand because for the same reason, reason they're saying today for storage files and a new system. So um I will have to find that and and bring it back. So at this time, I'm not gonna vote on moving this forward for me. Just because if we expended sixty thousand, if it was a budget item, I understand what you're saying, Lori, because you guys ended up doing some of this stuff through IT. But I'd like to know exactly whether sixty thousand was spent last year on case management software.
Yeah, because last year they um, since you guys paid them the initial money to get started and that was back, I want to say in two thousand twenty and you got like COVID money or something for that.
Right.
And after that, they have not paid anything to them because they were not producing what they needed.
Okay, so uh maybe one of you could send me an email if if you can on that or this this board, if you can find that sixty thousand, what that was spent on. And if I can find it, I'll find it beforehand. I can send that to you as well.
Very good. Please, please do, Commissioner Hancock. And as Lori mentioned, I I may have, I I know that we would have budgeted for having some, normally there's a licensing fee that goes on. And if if that other company would have ever produced, we would have had to pay them a licensing fee on an annual basis. So I know we budgeted some money for that, that was, would have been unspent. But we've just haven't, I I'm just certain we've not spent sixty thousand dollars on a on a management system for twenty twenty-three. I I just, I don't know what that would be. So.
We'd have to do research.
Anyway, we'll, we'll have, I'll happily look.
Research that, maybe you can come up with that and then it answer my question. And like I said, if you have to move forward, I'm not against this, but I'm not really ready to make a decision until I know the answer of that sixty thousand.
And and I will speak um for this new software that they're looking at. I have learned a lot since we initially started trying to get into out, you know, CAN software. And this company, I've been in on one meeting with you guys and I was impressed with their language. I was impressed with what they were showing us, what they were providing. And we could speak, you know, across the board and and they understood what we were talking about. So like the connection to the UJS, that's very important. We do that publicly, or Legal Edge, we ended up having to give them code to do that. So um and we worked with Legal Edge quite a bit. They, they really did overpromise and did not provide, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I don't remember as much in detail as Commissioner Hancock. I do, you know, being on the PDO board, I I've been up there and I know we've talked about it. I just couldn't remember if it was just in a budget line item or not as well. That's what I was, I I know you've, you know, when I first came on the PDO board, that was one of the first things you showed us. You showed us your big file closet room. I I don't even know if it's a closet, it's a room. And you said, this is what we need to do. And so I I do remember discussing it, I just don't remember the the details on that. So I I would like to know the information on that as well. I mean, I do believe you need a um case management system. I just want to know if we've already spent money on one or what that case was. Uh because if if we haven't, then I'm I'm on board with this a hundred percent. I just, but if we did, I want to know why we spent it and then what happened. And maybe it was just the remembering the initial pay in, because that was when I first came on.
Yeah, and that was, that was, we had some of like those COVID dollars that could be applied towards working remotely and things of of that nature. So it fit within some of that, those dollars that we were available for counties and and other entities. And that was back in, I want to say it was two thousand. And so we had searched and and we we thought we could get about fifty thousand. And that's, you know, basically what we could afford was that Legal Edge, which was both the migration as well as the light, you know, the ongoing expenditures per year. You know, and I, they, they just, they've un, been unable to really provide us the kind of quality that we want to have that works as well as what IT built us, you know, by themselves. And so that, you know, it's, you, we, we like to, I I think we're very data oriented. So I like to be able to know how many cases my attorneys have at any given moment, what kind of cases they have, be able to run a report on a daily basis if necessary. And that's just, that's just the functionality that they were trying to build for us that they didn't have as their, as their off the shelf product. Because they, they, they manage hundreds of, or they have the software for hundreds of public defender offices and offices similar to it. But we, we were always asked, they said, yes, we can do what you are currently doing, plus some of these other things. And it just hasn't really happened. So we're, we're ready to, we're very ready to move on. And um and so that we can have the kind of software program we, our office needs.
Mr. Chair, is it a problem if we continue this just to get clarification so that maybe we could have consensus upon the board?
Well, um, it might be. We, we've negotiated this price and the, and the understanding that we would act quickly. So um I'm not saying that they would not give us this deal next month, for example. But like I said, that they really wanted us to do it in February if we could do that. And I was like, well, we we chucked around and we felt like this level of a contract, we weren't comfortable us just doing internally. We need uh the board to be able to do so. And I just want to emphasize the risk position of the county is if you, you know, we're gonna go through the regular budgeting cycle for twenty twenty-five. If you were to decide, look, we're not, we're not going to fund this going forward, we can get out of the contract. This would be for us to to get up and running here in twenty twenty-four with a good software program that's necessary. I know the IT department has been gracious enough to keep alive what they've built forever while we've been trying to migrate to a different system. So I don't know for certain if if we're gonna get the same pricing, but, you know, I can't say that we wouldn't for sure either.
Mr. Chair, just one follow up then. What would it do? Um, what would it do, and hypothetically here? If we approved it now, you get it set up and we decide not to approve it next year, what does that in, look like?
Well, we'd probably have to go back to our old system with, you know, IT, you know, which, um, you know, the, the reality is anymore, I don't know what the state's attorneys was, I don't see Laura here. I think there's just three hundred thousand. I mean, these are expensive systems that to manage the level of files and data that we have. It's, this is a cost of doing business really to anymore. Um, you know, we've looked around for prices. This one we thought was very competitive and, and they want, they were willing to work with us as a government entity um, to reduce the cost substantially based on how many files we have, how many users we have, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I, you know, I, we, we would have to be leaning on IT dramatically, but I think, I don't know if we could do it or not, but, you know. Um, but I, I think going forward, this is going to be sort of necessary for a department like ours is to have about a fifty thousand dollar software program to run all the files that we have. You know, six thousand plus files plus, where do we add fifty plus years of, of back data that it can pull immediately? And just to give you a sense of it, it can, it, you know, as far as, and these software companies are now, um, developing AI. And the File Line is deep into that. It, some of those functionality is not available yet, it has limited AI capabilities. But eventually what these will do is you have, it'll say, it'll prompt you to say, you, you have a motion hearing in ten days. And I see you haven't filed motions, should we, you know, should I prepare those for you? Um, and, and get those ready for your review. It can say, I see you have a hearing coming up in two, in two days. And there's no note that you've had a conversation with the client in the last two days. Should we contact them to let them know? I mean, that stuff's not quite there yet, but this is all coming, so.
Just another comment. Um, uh, what, what Eric is speaking to as far as the fee of the fifty-four thousand dollars a year, that is less than a software developer in our office. And you can't find them and get them trained up. I'm still working on training a person that's been here for over two years, he's going on his third year. On understanding and seeing how everything's done. You always bring in a new software developer, they got to deal with the old software developer's code, they got to figure it all out again. It's, we're not a software developing company, that, that's not us. And technology is changing so fast that we can't keep up with it in our department with the number of people that we have. Or even if I was to increase the number of developers, it, it takes a long time to get them trained up.
So.
Chair. That's a way to look at it.
Yeah, I'm going to make sure everybody has a chance to speak before I go back to you a second time, okay?
Eric, you literally took the words out of my mouth. It's the cost of doing business. And therefore I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to, to move to authorize.
Like to speak first?
He can make his mo- and you can speak afterward.
Okay, I'll move to authorize the Public Defender's Office enter into an agreement with File Line for the case management software. And authorize the one-time payment of twenty-seven thousand for initial setup and a yearly, uh, cost of fifty-four thousand, which includes the licensing fee.
Motion made by Roskine, accepted by Drews. Now, Ms. Hancock.
Thank you, Lloyd. Um, main thing I'm worried about is we paid a one-time cost of the case management software already. And then we're paying an annual fee of sixty thousand on something else. That's all I'm worried about, um, not against this. It's just I'd like to know if those numbers are repetitive with something else we just already did. So supposedly, um, we did IT for the setup. And is there an annual fee of sixty thousand on the case management software and something else? So, um, when I saw it, I didn't see, um, that IT was on that. When I looked at it, all I saw was the software fee was sixty thousand. I didn't see if it was annually, biannually or whatever. Um, so, um, I'll be voting no, but, um, not against you personally. But I just want to see if we already spent money and do we have to con, uh, basically tell the other contract if it's sixty thousand that we no longer, uh, need their services or we no longer need that software, so.
Thank you, Deb. Mr. Drews.
So Eric, uh, you know from communication that we've had during his legislative session that with bills that are apparently moving forward at this point in time, there is going to, it is going to require some additional tracking of information that we can share with the state. Uh, we have the, uh, Indigent, uh, Defense Fund that is moving forward with the state setting up the commission. But there is an additional three million dollars in that to be dispersed to counties. And once that kicks in, obviously they're going to want to be able to track those, the expenditures for those indigent, uh, legal costs for sure. Uh, the other bill that's moving, in fact, that's got, that's passed, it's, and we're trusting the governor will sign that bill. The, uh, there's another bill also that, uh, does impact Pennington County because of the minimum security prison here. And that's for crimes that are committed by, uh, yeah, somebody that's in the prison system that's committing a crime in prison. And so far you've, uh, you've paid the bill, you've, you've taken care of the, your responsibilities on it and paid the bill on it. And now the, the legislature has passed a bill of saying that should not have to be the responsibility of those counties. That it should be a responsibility to state. Uh, I'm sure that's still going to mean that you're going to have to do the defending, uh, but be reimbursable expense at that point in time. So, so those are a couple of things that, that we know that will need to be tracked for the future too, so.
You know, and that, I know when, uh, thank you for that question, Christopher Drews. And, you know, when we had that que- when you'd asked that question of how many cases do we defend? Like, there's no way I could track that. With this new software program, I could actually do that. I could plug in an address and it can tell me exactly where, you know, you, it's every, every file we've had since nineteen seventy-two that's in the system is searchable. Uh, in the, in the, so I, the, the amount of information we're going to be able to generate and have at our fingertips is going to be remarkable compared to what we currently have. Like I could have very, I could have quickly answered that question, how many cases do we have? Um, and so going forward, we can say, yes, this one came from that minimum security prison. And therefore, you know, we should, and I don't know exactly what the mechanism will be, do we just build the state directly? Cause right now, if it's a city charge, we build a city, our, our attorney fees. So I don't know exactly how that'll work, but we can at least answer the question and know it, so.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I do have a quick question, I did see IT talking back there. Was there more information that they were willing to bring forward that it looked like they were having a conversation about it before I make a decision?
Okay, thank you very much. So, um, just to answer that, I, I, we, I have a little bit more information about what we paid to Legal Edge. And it was fifty-six thousand dollars and that was back in twenty twenty. That was Shannon Lapp, he's our office manager. And, and, uh, um, we had budgeted, what was that number Shannon?
Twelve, twelve thousand.
We had budgeted twelve thousand in this year and, and, you know, for, uh, licensing, should they have been able to produce the product? So, but that hasn't come to fruition, so. Uh, maybe that answers your question, Commissioner Hancock, about what we had expended.
So.
Ms. Mr. Chair, I may be able to help Commissioner Hancock. I think I found the motion that you're thinking of. Um, July twenty-first of twenty twenty, it was moved by the Cory Second of Bay Roskine to approve the purchase of the case management software from Legal Edge, not to, not to exceed sixty thousand.
Okay, so that was twenty twenty, not twenty twenty-three?
Memo that goes with that says that the initial upfront cost is sixty thousand and then they would budget a yearly licensing fee of twelve thousand after that.
Okay, so now we're just taking, thank you, Ms. Holly. So we're just taking all of that off and starting with this company?
Starting new.
Okay.
We're done with that.
I'm in agreement then, thank you for answering.
All right, any further questions Deb?
No, thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor for approval in a second. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
And thank you guys for doing the quick research, that was good. Next, that brings us up to item twenty-two, which is items from Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Yes, Commissioners, um, at the last commission meeting, Commissioner Hancock had asked to look into how Mini-HAHA does some of their agenda items. Um, and I do want to thank you, Commissioner Hancock, for bringing that forward. I do routinely look at other counties to see what they're doing, um, to make sure that we're being the most efficient and effective that we can be with the board's time, um.
Mr. Chair, can I make a quick correction? I think it was me who did that, because I was the one that asked for Mini-HAHA, but maybe I'm wrong.
It was, it was Travis and I.
Between the two of you, between the two of you.
Okay.
Um, I looked at Mini-HAHA and how they handle theirs. And they do handle their personnel notices and their reports a little bit differently than we do. Um, in Pennington, we, neither one of those items require board action. So that is therefore why they are not placed as an actual agenda item for you. Um, in Mini-HAHA County, they do put those on their consent agendas, basically for acknowledgement for public notice. Um, so I'm certainly happy to answer any questions on how we, how we prepare our agendas and do our public notices and for personnel and reports. Um, in the memo, you can see that our personnel changes are listed in the minutes for each meeting. They are not broken down by new hires or promotions like Mini-HAHA does. Um, but the information is all included in there. And the reports, the only one that's required in the minutes is the auditor's account of the treasurer, which is also included in our minutes, it's just not an actual agenda item. Um, so if the board would like to see a change in how we notice those two items, um, I have put together a proposal for you that would provide additional public notice, um, but would also keep us in line with what the statutes require.
Mr. Lester.
I didn't even say anything, but okay.
I, I see you reaching, because I got a comment afterwards, but I.
Okay.
You, you brought it forward.
No, no worries. Um, I guess part of what my thought process on this is, and, and it's because we got a lot of, uh, questions several months ago. But one of the, one of the issues that, that I had, and, and, and maybe there's a better way to fix the, the problem. But if this, if this information is public record and we have citizens that are researching it and they can't find it, and then they, they call to an office and they say, hey, how do I get this information? And then they're told they have to fill out a FOIA request rather than directing them to either the minutes or whatever, something that's easier for them to search via Google, I don't know. Um, that is kind of why I think it's important to put it on the agenda in a way that it can be searched. Because if someone's being told they need to do a FOIA request, when all we've got to do is tell them, um, you can look at the minutes on such and such, um, county commission board meeting, then that would be easier for the citizens. But whenever I had three of them tell me that they did ask the office and they were told to do a FOIA request and not say, hey, can you search the minutes on the first day of the month, uh, of each year? That's why I think it needs to be set up in a different way. And, and maybe the way Mini-HAHA does it doesn't work for us either. But that's the whole reason for it, is if it's public information and it's easy to get to, we shouldn't be telling citizens to do a FOIA request.
You know, I, I wasn't here during the discussions earlier, but when I read through this, I thought it was fine. Uh, the, option two. I think the only thing I read through there was instead of putting that long list at the, at the very beginning, you put it at the end of the agenda so that it doesn't confuse people, you know, it's on there. But they don't have to go through all that to get to the rest of the agenda, am I correct?
That is correct.
So I thought that was well thought out as far as, you know, it's not going to hinder what you're looking at. You could see it, but if you want to see it, it's at the end of the agenda, but you can scroll through the rest of the agenda and get the stuff. I, I liked that part. Um, I'm not sure how, how everybody else feels, but I think I really didn't see no problem with it being on consent agenda.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
I agree, um, official record should be on a regular agenda. Um, new hires, promotions, even for the, the employees in the public, I think that's pretty cool. Um, to see the new hires on there basically and promotions and DBM and reclasses. Um, it's for the public knowledge and again, it might be easier to find than in the minutes. Um, what I was talking about was, um, I was addressing the regular agenda compensation items being put on executive session. That's what I had brought up and to look at, and I don't know if Ron looked at that, he said he was going to look at it, that when we're putting stuff on executive session instead of regular agenda, we are putting promotions, DBN changes and reclasses in executive session. Um, someone said it's because, just a little bit ago, it's because it didn't have a name on it. Uh, it, uh, the ones in twenty twenty-three, um, some of them didn't have names on them and they're in executive session. I know for the new position in the commission office and in the, I didn't look up all, new position in administration office, it was a DBM change. So if those are already put in the minutes, why are we putting them in executive session? Because, um, those names and those people will be on the agenda in, um, the minutes anyway. So, uh, what I looked up is, remember I told you, Ron, I do comparables and I'd see if I was right. I just looked in twenty twenty-one and we did step increases, we did new positions, we did position rating adjustments and DBM new positions. All on the agenda, not executive session. I have a packet here that I could use for examples besides those two, um, for them. Someone says because Gallagher, Gallagher shouldn't have made the changes of telling, um, new positions and, um, DBM ratings from a step forty-one to a forty-two with a name on it that is in the minutes anyway. So my issue is, why are we putting stuff in executive session for, um, exceptions, we're calling them? John didn't call them exceptions, the exceptions were taken in the back. If there was like, when you talk about, um, performance, if there was a negative performance, that was put in executive session. The positives should always be told by the, by the, uh, and in the front to show that Holly does need a new position. That's a cool thing, that Holly says, okay, this one isn't working, um, I didn't understand it. Fire administrator, um, putting his, making a fire administrator coordinator? How does that have to be in executive session? We have, um, we do have a packet of them where we have salary adjustments, we have promotion step increase from B twenty-two to B twenty-three, those would be in the minutes anyway, so it'd be public knowledge. A B twenty-four to B thirty-one, it doesn't have any performance issues on it, it's just a switch from dispatch one to a dispatch four. These have been in executive session. They're not executive session material, they're not. They were done before in twenty twenty-one, I looked them all up to do comparables and all of these step increases and these things that were done. My bottom line is, and we have it. Code of Conduct, Section Two, Responsibilities in Public Service. Members should dispose of the business of the county in a deliberate manner that assures citizens have meaningful knowledge of the input into their decisions. It's easier for them to look at this and go, wow, Holly, that was really cool. And if they want to talk to Holly, they can talk to Holly about the position. In executive session, all you do is get a DBM or B twenty-four to a B twenty-six. There's nothing wrong with anybody calling Holly or calling fire administrator or calling Cindy Muller about somebody, Casey Iceland, getting a, um, step increase to two. So.
Let's try and keep names out of this.
Well, it's not a name because those aren't names I made up. Those, those are just examples. Um, Holly, I don't know if Holly did or didn't with a coordinator or auditor or, or whoever it was. Um, let's just use mine name then, I was just using people that would actually ask for those things. They aren't, I don't know if they're on this paper, so I'm not being offensive. It's not towards a certain person, it's about an issue, so.
Oh, Chair, I'd like to clarify that I did some research when I heard there was a concern about this that in twenty twenty-one, and I took this directly out of the minutes and the motions that were made from executive session, there were thirty-three exceptions that were made and it was for individuals who, uh, was a compression issue or it was a step increase, that type of in- individuals rather than groups. In twenty twenty-two, there were forty-four exceptions. And then twenty twenty-three, which is when I started, there were twenty-eight exceptions. And these were all individuals that were being discussed. And I think Sheriff Mueller said it best that. And I think Sheriff Mueller said it best, that those are executive sessions, because it would be very difficult if for some reason or other, it was not approved by the Commissioners. It'd be very difficult for the department head or elected official to come forward and have it denied, and then go back to explain to their employee that, yes, I did ask and I advocated for you, but it didn't pass. Because that pits the department head or elected official against the Commissioners. So to be able to have that personnel discussion about a specific individual in executive session is very appropriate from that standpoint.
Yes. I'd like to finish, if I could. So you put fire administrator coordinator, you put some other new positions? Those are executive session, for what reason?
Because it was an individual being promoted into that position.
But this does not have, as Lloyd has said, the individual's name on it. Neither does the assistant to Holly, doesn't have a name on it. So what I'm saying is, if you're putting all of this in executive session. Okay, so I'm going to read it. We are requesting Board review of staff assisted three positions in the creation of new administration coordinator position. Addition of new positions will not add to the headcount totals of the fire administration. That we are clearly defining the duties and responsibilities to position, support operations's office. We are also requesting, and I won't read that part, reactive pay, which we have done out here on back pay on other people. So tell me how that is something that you should tell the public.
So on November first of 2022, is the specific motion that was in the minutes that does have the employee's name along with the position?
Okay, this was February seventh, ma'am.
So, since it's already in the minutes and no longer in executive session, I can go ahead and share this. It was moved by Hadcock and seconded by Lester to place Valerie Newman at B twenty-three, step five, at twenty-two eighty per hour, effective June twenty-six, 2022, and to back pay in the amount of three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-four cents to be split from the fire admin budget and the emergency management budget, and the vote was unanimous.
Okay, this was, ma'am, February seventh. So that is after the fact, when Valerie Newman was here. And I actually helped her with that, because we found out she needed back pay. So this was Jerome Harvey, Casey Iceland, CC new position in fire administrator, February seventh. It has no name on it. The one with the assistant on there, no name on it, I could read that one.
So I apologize, but I need to correct you on that one. On February seventh of 2023, the motion that was made into the minutes was moved by Lester and seconded by Ross Connect to approve the creation of the fire administration coordinator position at a DBM C forty-one, to update the position listing on file, and further move to place Valerie Newman into the position at step one at two thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars bi-weekly, effective January eighth of 2023, and to authorize back pay, and the vote was unanimous. So again, it was an individual decision that was being made about one person, and it dealt with as far as putting them into a promoted position.
So you gave her a promotion and you think that should be in the back? Because if, if we decide out here that we do not, we don't have to make the motion, we just don't do the fire administrator coordinator change. You wouldn't have that motion, would you? So no one would know it was Valerie. No one would have known at the point that the DBM would change or anything, because the motion would have been, died for lack of a second.
So the motion that would have been on the floor, though, that would have been requested, would have had the position as well as the employee's name being promoted into that position. So again, and I'm going to quote Sheriff Mueller on this, is that the concern is, if that had not passed, that how do you go back and explain to that employee that I advocated for you, but the Commissioners decided against it? It doesn't look well then to that employee that is in an adversarial relationship between the department head and elected official and the employee with the Commissioners. That's why it should be something, because it can be performance related. It is performance related that somebody is being promoted.
I disagree. If you're doing a promotion and you want to promote a county administrator, or you want to promote a fire coordinator, you didn't have to put that on the second part yet until we agreed to it. And then once you agreed to it, you could have bring it at the next meeting and said Valerie would be taking it. For full discretion, it is our job as Commissioners, for full discretion, and then Holly's doesn't say a name on it. So Holly asked for it, I agreed, I probably made the motion, so it wasn't in disagreement. She wanted to promote, I believe, one of her people, which I thought was positive. So we took that in executive session as well, and it didn't have a name on it. So what I'm saying, Carol, is like we did today for Mr. Guffey or any others. Because it has a name on it, I don't think somebody's going to say, oh, my gosh. I would ask them first, if you have a B twenty-three to a B twenty-four, I don't think the Commission's going to shut them down. Now, if there should be questions, we did counting officials. We changed their DBM ratings where this says step increases, so we step increased them or we changed the ratings. We did that in executive session, came out and put it in the minutes. That is not full disclosure, that is official record that should be put on the agenda. Maybe that's my opinion, but I don't think you should be putting things, some of this stuff behind there. And if we have positions that we think that they might not get, see if we agree with them and then pay them accordingly, based on wage and salary.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, no, I want to make something clear. I mean, right now, we are talking about the agenda, changing that around. But what also what was discussed is, quite frankly, yes, there was, if it has something to do with personnel, talking about that personals, person's ability to do the job, the professionalism, I believe that needs to be in executive session. We have taken positions out here on, on the dais, and that's what we do. But when it comes to a person, the name, their ability, their jobs, we do that in the back. And what I've heard from the department heads, because we started to not do that a couple of different times, is they didn't like that, because they like to meet with the Commissioners in there and be able to explain to them their personalities and why they're making an exception. It's an exception to the rule is the reason why we go into executive session.
Point of order.
No.
Point of order.
You're out of order.
No, you're out of order, because you're not telling the truth. I have the facts right here, Lloyd. So exceptions, you want to call it an exception, no, it's point of order.
It is.
I'm going to say my point, you're saying things that are false. It is, I have a packet here that shows it. I told Ron to look it up, and I told the same thing. Once you don't tell the name, and there's a position, or you give increases to department heads or otherwise, I'm not against department heads getting increases. What I was against is doing in the, in the public business in the public.
Okay.
And we're not doing that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Please say it, so I'm not false.
As I said, the Commission did come up with the policy of exceptions of how we follow it. It's a policy, it's a form that's filled out and given. So, Mr. Drews.
Not in policy.
I believe that the way that we've been handling these is more than appropriate. And I would just simply say, I don't, I don't see a reason for a change at this point in time. And I would suggest we just move forward with what we've been doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr., Ron, do you have a comment before I go back to Lester for a second time?
Right now, I'm just trying to take all this in, so nothing right now.
Chair.
Mr. Lester.
So I had a question, just to clarify with Carol, if you don't mind. And you said if we bring it up here, department heads are concerned, and if we bring it up here, we have a discussion and it's denied, then I want to understand their concern. Because if it's taken in executive session and we decide that we're not going to do it too, isn't that the same thing as denying it?
Yes.
And I guess I'm just trying to understand how it's any different, whether we deny it or not take it forward out here, which is a denial, if we don't take it out, we didn't make a motion for it. Or if we come out here and decide to make a motion, and let's say we were splitting it, it was denied. I guess I'm trying to understand and reconcile that in my brain, how it's any different for the department head. But then I have a follow-up question, sir.
Sure, and I appreciate that question, Travis, that the department head and elected official have the option of whether they're communicating to their employee what they're intending to do when it's going into executive session. So the employee is not aware in most cases of exactly what is going to transpire there, or if anything is transpiring. And so if you take no action on it, it remains confidential between the department head and the Commissioners. If you do take action on it and make the motion to approve it, then it becomes public knowledge.
So what you're telling me is some of these, the employee has no clue that the department head is coming forward and asking for this. And that's the reason why it's put in executive session, so that if something happens, surprise. If nothing happens, the employee has no clue what was being talked about or what has transpired.
Correct.
Okay. Follow up on that one then? And this is just more for the procedure of this, because it's dealing with this. When we add a new position, like we did today for Witcher, not, not add a new position, we changed a position for Mr. Witcher and.
Created a position.
Created a position, but we converted a FTE from one position to another. When we do something like create a new position, why wouldn't that piece of it, let's just take for a second that we put, that we have somebody in mind for it. If we're going to have a create a new position, why wouldn't that piece of it be talked about, like we did today, explaining why we need that position in public, and then go to an executive session and say, well, we think this person fits in that role because of X, Y, and Z or whatnot, and then come back out and put them in that position, rather than discussing the new position in executive session and the person for it? Maybe that's part of what I'm, I'm wondering. It would make sense to discuss creating the new position, what the new position's going to entail, do we even agree with it? And then go, and if we're going to talk about an individual to go into that position, then go there. I'm just saying according to how we're looking at things today.
Mr. Chair, if I can answer that. Travis, I absolutely agree with you that I would support that us making that change. And Commissioner Hadcock, to your point, that is how we handled the fire administrator position and coordinator position and the new commission coordinator position. And those were done because there was a specific person in mind for that position. And so that's why it went in the back, is because there was a specific person. A more proper way to probably handle that is exactly what Commissioner Lassiter is suggesting, is that we put just the position creation discussion on the agenda as a separate item, that's all done in public. Then, if in the event that there is a employee that is being considered for that position, that would require an exception request, that would be over and above what the current promotions policy would require.
Right.
That is absolutely when that needs to go in the back in executive session to allow the discussion of the performance of that individual. The employee, I mean, again, executive session is permissive. The Board has the ability to go in, you don't have to. You can do all of this in the public if that's the Board's wish. However, you're hearing from HR Director that department heads feel that that is something that should be done behind closed doors in executive session to discuss a specific employee. So I do absolutely support a change in that we only handle positions on regular agenda, just like you did today. You created those positions. Now, if there is somebody that they're interested in slating into that, if it's outside of the approved compensation policies, that's when it goes behind closed doors for the Board to decide if they're willing to grant that exception.
So, Chair.
You done, Mr. Hadcock?
So I agree, and that's my point, Holly, is when you're doing a new position, we do it. If we do it for performance, like promotions, I think it should be out front. If you're doing promotions on somebody, you had to have told, I'm going to use your name again, Holly, I'm not trying to use you, so I'm not offensive. I'm going to give Holly a performance step, two steps, blah, blah, blah. Do you think the public is going to, or this Commission thinks that Carol shouldn't give Holly a performance step? You're not the department head, but if you were, that we're going to say, well, why would you do such a thing? I don't think anybody that's ever done any promotions or anything else would ever shut anybody down. And most of the time, they know ahead of time and be happy to have the public know. So some of this stuff, I don't think is going to hurt, because you're going to say that, we're going to say no. We say no to all kinds of stuff that people bring forward, it might hurt their feelings, right? Because we can't do it, we don't have the budget, that kind of thing, but at least they know the facts on it. They're not guessing that what we're doing is because of this, this, and this, and we just have, we don't even have the steps from DBM twenty-three, Holly got, to DBM twenty-six. We just have what you got in the minutes afterwards. That's why I said the minutes and all that stuff are important. But promotions, new hires and stuff, that's a positive for the county to put forward, or new positions, because the public does want to know what we're doing. We do the public's business in the public. I didn't say all stuff that was in executive, executive session was a bad thing. I'm saying we need to change some of it in order for it to be more public, or basically dispose of the public business in a deliberate manner that assures the citizens that they understand is the bottom line, what's on the agenda and what that, all those numbers mean at the end. So that way, if they do have a question, they can call Holly on the agenda and goes, what does that promotion thing mean? Or what is that new hire, who's that? You know, or what's that going on for a new hire in HR Director and stuff? It just makes things more apparent, because I don't think we need to have people coming up asking for FOIA requests because they don't know it's in the minutes. And then we, we say, well, we have it on the agenda, it's straight up. Sorry you didn't see that, January fifth, we don't have it in the minutes. So I'm in agreement with you, Holly, on, on some of this stuff. If we don't have to bring it back there, we can do stuff and change the position later, or we can do some of these things so the public knows the business, and then move it forward in executive session, who that is, that makes total sense.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
I thought I had a direction, but no, I don't. So I would ask for continuance, because there's a lot of things that I need to discuss before I can vote on option two the day. So that would be my motion to continue this until the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Deb to continue?
I don't know what that meeting date is.
March nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. And what I gather.
Good discussion.
No, it, no.
I appreciate that, Ms. Holly.
It was good discussion, but what I'm gathering is, I really liked what Holly said. I think that's a good point. I mean, and I think that's kind of where we go, we're talking about positions before the exception. And then when the, a person comes forward, any exceptions in the DBM would go.
To the next meeting.
But positions go first and then exceptions, if somebody's in line for that. That's what I'm kind of gathering, a consensus with the Commission.
Right, and that was my point a little bit, is that you have these positions.
I'm just clarifying it.
Yeah, well, that was my point, and Holly just reiterated it, which I appreciate.
Certainly clarify that in the memo, because the other piece to this memo is a change in how we handle vouchers and abatement requests by the proposed consent agenda policy that I have on here. So I don't know if there's any questions that the Board has on that piece.
Well, they can do that privately, right now, it's a continuing motion.
And they do do that on Mini-Has ahead in the other one, so you're right, Holly, they just put them on consent.
But yes, I think right now we have a continuing motion with some direction of what everybody liked what they seen.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item number twenty-three, this is items from public per SDCL one twenty-five dash one. Speaker request form is required. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board or the Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this item on any issue brought forth that are not properly noted. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and interest. And I have no comment speaker request forms. So I would look for a motion to go into about a ten-minute recess while planning sets up.
I'll move.
Moved by Lester.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
She's ready.
I move, we move into the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
Moved by Drew, seconded by Lester to go into Board of Adjustments, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I will say, Commission utilizes speaker request forms on these, so if you would like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form, locate the bookshelves in the back of the chambers, return it to Commission Manager, locate the lower right side of the dais, and I do believe it. And I do believe unless it's the applicant, um, yeah, the applicants don't have to, but we do have one Zoom one, I think it's on item Z, C. So with that, we'll move forward with, uh, item A. Cody.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Uh, item A is variance VA 23 dash 17. It's to reduce the setback to the east property line for an existing structure on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is Keith and Jen Hig. This was continued or has been continued multiple times. It was last continued at the February 20th meeting. At the applicant's request, as not all the commissioners were here for the vote. Uh, so just a little, little rundown of what, what happened. The applicant came in for a building permit for this, um, storage structure that you see here. It requires a 30-foot setback from residential, which would be, uh, these lots up here and a 10-foot setback from this side yard right here. Uh, the structure starts right on this corner, uh, eight, uh, eight feet, uh, seven inches, I believe is what it is. Um, so he doesn't meet the setback for either one of those requirements. Um, so staff is recommending denial. Or variance VA 23 dash 17, as there's no special condition that exists on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
So he's, meets the side but not the rear?
So he doesn't, he doesn't meet either one?
Either one?
Um, yeah, so it's, it's kind of tricky. So that if you can just picture, there's a, the structure starts roughly about right here. Um, so you have to be 30 feet from this suburban residential district and eight feet from here, so both of them are side yard. Um, he just doesn't meet that because of where the corner lies.
Okay. And the applicant's here today? Mr. Hig?
Good afternoon. My name's Kent Hig, Hig and Hig LLP, represent Mr. Haug and his wife with regard to the variance request. One of the things I want to start out with is the, uh, keen sense that Mr. Haug has with regard to, um, permission versus forgiveness issue because it's important to him. He wanted me to express this, that there's no intent to disrespect the system, period. Also, he has two prior buildings that were built with building permits. He's, so he, he knows he has to do it. There's a situation that, uh, there's extenuating circumstances, a number of them frankly, that, that led to where we are now. Also to start out with, the initial complaint with regard to the parcel had to do with, I believe, Conex containers setting inside the setback in that more narrow part. Um, I visit with him and the owner of those containers that are having them stored there, uh, are, are quite heavy, but he will, um, hire a crane and they, they've in the process of, of arranging for a crane to move those. And they'll move them into a complying area, uh, probably on this side of the buildings closer to the highway where there's, uh, no issues. So those are being addressed. And, um, I also said that, that just, I haven't, I don't make it out there, but just by looking at some of the pictures that they're taking at the time, there are a few, there are items out there that look kind of junky. So I said, clean that up. Type, yes, absolutely no problem with that. And then that is, that plan is, is moving forward. Um, he did just re, uh, re, um, return last week from Sioux Falls, uh, from his, I think his last cancer treatment, uh, procedure. And, um, that is why he wasn't at the last one and the primary reason why he's not here now, uh, he's recovering. Uh, with regard to the chronological aspect of what happened when, uh, again, it's important for him to, to make sure it's, it's clear that, uh, he, yes, he did have the plat or the slab port. And this, uh, which is not required in talking with, uh, planning, uh, folks, uh, it does not require a, a permit for that. But you take the risk of not having the right spot, which, what is what happened here. With regard to the erection of the building, uh, his, the crew that was to raise, to, the, the steel and the beams and so forth have been sitting there for two years. During COVID, it was a real, you know what, to try to arrange things and so forth and so on. However, um, in early June, late May of last year, um, the erection crew for the building, uh, took it two months early. I called it that day, as he says, he was sitting in Perkins or Denny's or something, and got the call, we can get, we here, not sure we can make, make it back. We had an opening. So he said, okay, go ahead and do it. And so at that time, uh, he applied for the per, the permit to go vertical. Now, and, and I double-checked that to make sure the dates were, were consistent with what I'm, I'm understanding. And in fact, he did in early and mid-May, I just wanted to say May 16th, um, if I, if I remember, uh, was the date that he applied for the permit itself. And it went through the process, um, and was denied after they noticed that based on the survey that was provided, he was actually, by his own survey, he was actually, uh, two things. Uh, about a foot and a half, not quite, it was 8.7 feet from the, from the lot line of the commercial property. Uh, he was, uh, so 1.3 feet inside that setback. And it found out also at that time that he was with, after submitting it, that he was within that 30-foot radius from that corner pen of the residential district, parcel number 23669, also known as lot five. Which by the way, in your submissions, there is a, a letter from that homeowner, um, Mr. and Mrs. Reader. And, uh, they have no problem with it at all. Uh, they've reasserted that with him recently when he, when he contacted them just a few days ago. Uh, I want to make sure that that was still the case. And to my knowledge, um, although all the green cards have been sent out in compliance with the, with the organs and so forth, we have not, nor have, uh, have the counties, by my understanding, received any objection from any of the other neighbors. They've all been duly notified. So they're, we're, we're checking off all the boxes here for, is it reasonable to provide a variance? Um, and I want to say that, working with the planning staff, uh, I had a chance, they made, um, time, it was, it was, it was a few, it was about a week before the last meeting. And, uh, were great to work with and help me understand exactly what the issues were to narrow those down. And they made it very clear that, that they simply, it's not within their authority to grant something that isn't permitted. So that's why we're here. And they said, it's not egregious, it's not something that we believe was intentional and so forth. On a side note, when the steel rectors came, they found that the slab was a foot and a half roughly out of square, which would explain that foot and a half into the, into the commercial side. Again, I say that because there's no intent for Mr. Haug to wanna jack people around. It just isn't. Um, and so with that in view, and you look at the different, uh, you know, the boxes or the criteria, uh, with what a variance under, under, um, section 509 of the variance ordinance, uh, what items are, are the issues? Um, the only one that boxes marked yes is, does it injure neighborhood? And, and specifically in that, it's, it's not a big enough buffer. Now, injury can be defined as, that's a very general term. The person that would be affected, the only unit or only lot to be affected would be 23669. Again, that have submitted the, uh, letter, uh, that it's not an issue. And with regard to that, uh, any other statements or so forth that would need to be provided by my clients, they're happy to do. And also they're happy to pay any fines. Well, happy might be an exaggeration, but, but they, they, they expect if they, if necessary, they, they would pay fines. What they don't want to be, uh, required to do is it would require taking a 25-foot segment off of this building that's, it's insulated and so forth. They're nice buildings, fully engineered. And essentially having to take, tack it on to the, to the other side of the building where it would be in compliance. Easier said than done, and, and, uh, that would be something that they would really, really prefer not to have to do. But that's what it would require to be in compliance without any type of variance. So we, we ask that, uh, a, a variance be granted because there was none. And I was so sensitive about this, based on our conversation last time. It was not a, a intentional disrespect of this matter and this process. He's already done the process twice. Uh, and when he was found out to be rejected, uh, they were, not to comply, uh, he, again, went in for the variance that we're here, that is why we're here now. Also notable is that if you look at the, uh, site plan, there's a lot of room to just to move that building into the right spot. There's no reason he would have not done that had he known it was not in compliance. Uh, so with, for those reasons, there's not an intentional thing here. And every time I visit with my client, I find out something new that some, for some reason, he was not, not readily wanting to, to talk about. And, and that was, uh, this is also contemporaneous with when he found out he had cancer. To the extent that the board can consider that, there are a lot of things on his mind. Almost early, early mid-May was when he found out. And, um, so there's, there's extenuating circumstances all over the place. There's no injury to the neighborhood as far as the type of, of, of have any, anybody having any objection to it being there. So for those reasons, I'd ask this board to grant Mr. Haug a variance on, on having his building located there. With understanding that also he will be moving, bringing the narrow part with those containers and so forth, not number one, getting it cleaned up. And, and it's, and it's not horrible, but it doesn't look as good as I would like it to look if I lived in 667 or 665. So, but he's gonna move the Conex containers and then get that cleaned up out there.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Haggock?
So me and Mr. Hig had some conversations already. When told about the fines, um, your client told the planning director, one of the directors, assistant director, that he's gonna, basically he built it anyway, even though he was the one talking with him about getting a permit, right? And he built it knowing that he wasn't gonna get a permit and it was cheaper to do the fines than go through the system. So let me finish. So then, um, in that time, I had two complaints that I went up there. And it is complaint on 2365, if I, Duane might have to help me clarify that, but 2365. So that's the back end of the property as well. Since then, to be fair, um, there's some, if the neighbor on the east there has all kinds of storage sheds, right, looks like on the property line, and maybe I'm in disagreement with that, or I don't know the setback on it, but it's in commercial. He's still pretty much in commercial. He's not gone, if he went further back, I'd probably have more of a problem. Meaning if he went further back in that building because the noise and what could happen. Um, setting your storage units there, um, that was the complaint on 23665 and you're moving those. So at this point, um, most of the time, I'm more gonna be crabby at you for a minute and then the next set go, okay. Here's your bottom line. You have the east that has setbacks of nothing on theirs. You have storage units to the left that hopefully they're 10 feet. And this is 8.75 on the setback on the commercial, it's 30 feet. But then you have the neighbors that said that 30 feet, uh, wasn't required or didn't need it, um, they were going to be okay with that. Like I said, if you move the storage sheds, I think the neighbors would be in agreeable with that as soon as possible.
The Conex containers?
Yep.
Okay.
On 23665, just move them back on the setback. Then I think, um, I don't think you'll have, for me anyway, a problem with what you're doing. Now, again, I'll scold you a little bit and him for not getting the building permit, and that's what we do. And I believe if you knew about it and you told the director, there should be bigger fines than what we have right now. So people don't just wanna build it. But, um, bottom line is, I'm in agreement with this at this point, just from looking at all the circumstances and seeing what's on the other properties next door and what was the real issue with, with people that were calling me. So I'm in agreement at this point, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Roskin.
Cody, would you, on the screen, put those photos that I took last week? Uh, probably the one that shows the neighboring property? And the reason I mention that, because I wanted to actually, I drive by it all the time. Actually 10 years ago, when Keith was applying for a sign permit for that, I was behind him when Scott Anderson was the planning director back in the courthouse. And I would, I admired him, how conscientious he was, wanting to do everything by the book. And, uh, I've never forgot that. You know, I drive by those units and everything he's built shows integrity. That, uh, I remember that site when it was empty and, and so what he's done. And I keep thinking, how am I gonna vote on this? Well, I keep thinking intent, and I really don't, based on me standing behind him 10 years ago and how he acted with the planning zoning department, I really don't think he would have done this intentionally. And that's why I'll support it as well.
Thank you. And I will express that to my client too. That'll mean a lot to him to know that he's, that, your comments. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Lester.
I have a question. It's gonna be for you, sir, and for Cody. And the question is this, uh, what day was he notified by the crew that was gonna come in and build, you know, build the structure? Cause you said he was gone one day, he was at Perkins or something. What day was that?
It would have been the day before they actually showed up. It would have had to been late, mid, late May, right in there. Because he came as soon as he knew they were going to be doing that. Uh, contemporaneous with that, he hoofed it in and got the building permit to submit it. And he also wants to, his history on this, um, has been where he has submitted permits in the past. I think it was the first one, a number of years ago, uh, with, uh, a different staffer, one staff person, it, to be expressed to him, go ahead and start putting up, because it's gonna be a long time for we're gonna get to you. So, and then the, the second one, um, well, it was similar, but he did apply for the, the permit, but it, it was always a, a timing thing, which he always made sure eventually that they were in compliance with, with the permit would require. This one is different for all the reasons we've mentioned before, including having poured the slab in the wrong darn spot.
So roughly, you're saying mid-May, late May?
Yeah, within, within a couple of days of, of, of when he found out the crew, the crew was on its way.
And when did he apply for the building permit? But he never applied for the building permit?
Yeah.
Cody Sack, environmental planner, he applied for the building permit May 17th. Um, but from my understanding, and I can confirm with our building inspector, that structure had already been built by that time that he had done it, or built it. I'd have to confirm that though. There's, there's some, there's some confusion with, with, with when exactly, we don't have an aerial of exactly when it was built and how much was done at the time. But from my understanding, when David went out to do the building inspection, the structure was already there. Um, so it was done before he applied for it on May 17th.
And that, and that would not be how I understand it. But, uh, again, because it's all hearsay on both sides, I guess, um, uh, and he's not here to speak for himself. Even presuming that that was the case, it would be unlikely, uh, that, that it would have been completed before a permit was sought. It's my understanding when he found out that they were able to do it, he submitted the permit. Again, I guess, trying to put myself in his shoes, um, he had the timing set up for August of when it was scheduled to be erected. August, and everything's a mad rush, finds out he has cancer, et cetera, et cetera. You know the story. So let's assume that that is the case. No intent to not wanna do the right thing. No intent- No intent to disrespect the county's prosecuting procedures at all. So I guess I would, that, that fact still remains the same. So I guess that, that would be my only justification of saying, if it's a justification, and if it was erected already. Cause it doesn't work in any timelines. I've discussed with him regarding the erectors showing up two months early, and it was supposed to be in early August apparently where it was scheduled to be built. So that's the best I can do for you, I apologize.
Mr. Chair.
Travis, I'm going to get, Travis, Meg is going to get the timeline, so we're on the same page.
Just one follow-up question, how long does it take to build a building of that size or that type? If anybody knows from planning or?
As I understand, because it's pre-engineered, so, which is another thing. There's, there's no engineering concerns for a snow load and wind rating and that kind of stuff. It's pre-engineered and stamped by a South Dakota engineer when they deliver it to be in proper specification. But as I understand it, when they, when they start on them, they go together like a Lego building pretty darn quick. I mean, I don't think it takes them, you know, seven to 10 days to start to finish. This one might have taken a little longer because they had to make some adjustments because of the slab being off to some degree, but it goes up pretty quick.
Gary, do you have anything before I go a second time?
Cody, can I ask you a question? So he's on commercial, it's a storage facility. Got three permanent buildings and I don't, I didn't really look at the containers. But could they, under the current zoning and the, and the use of that property, I see there's RVs and campers on there. So RVs and campers are personal property, they have titles. So can he park those right next to the fence because they're not?
No, cause, so for Cody Sakar Environmental Planner, if you read under the ordinance for parking, anything that goes up against residential requires a 10-foot setback for parking. So those would still need to be 10 feet away from that residential zoning.
You done, Ron?
I guess the only thing I would add, if we got two conditions, and there's a letter from the neighbor that has the residential, could that letter be filed at the registered deeds with the, with that legal description? So that the next person that buys that property is aware that the owner before that had made an agreement? So after word gone, the next person that buys that someday, they say, hey, we want you to move it. No, there's a letter that goes back to 2024 that said that owner, and it runs with the deed.
We would, we would be assure the commission, and I think that it was one of the things I actually suggested to my client. Because, you know, rulemaking bodies such as yours, we're here to protect the future interests, not just today's, what happens now. And so we would work with whichever title company has this preference, either American or Pennington Title, to be filed on this property as an ancillary filing. A miscellaneous filing, I think they call it. So it would be in that train.
Right, and then that would be a third condition if we approve this.
The timeline, I just wanted to know the time.
No, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Just the timeline, Cody.
Okay, so Cody Sakar Environmental Planner, David's our building inspector, so that he applied on May 16th, 2023 for the building permit. He reviewed the permit on the 18th, and approximately on May 24th, he went out to the property and the structure was being built. It was close to being 100% done, but it wasn't 100% done at the time he went out on May 24th.
So, and I already knew that, Mr. Hague, so your client knew he had to get a building permit on May 16th. And that's why I wanted to say it, because our staff is very professional. And they would do something and then just come back and go, okay. So this man knew it, is the bottom line, on May 16th, May 18th. And he built it anyway without the building permit, and then he came ask, asked forgiveness after the fact. And also told one of our planners that it's cheaper to get the job done and pay the fine than it was to go through the building permit process. And if he would have went through the building permit process with our staff, he would not built where he built, and he would have done it right. So again, I'm gonna protect our staff because I know sometimes people will say, well, they did, or we don't know the timeline. Well, they're trying to tell you something and they brought this forward for a reason. Because he built it without a permit, full knowing he needed one. So that's the bottom line. And I knew that beforehand. If this is gonna hurt anybody in one sense, no, but that's why I said, when you fully do something in a process that you know you have to do, I think there should be a bigger fine. Cause basically you did it because you didn't want to go through a process. So what he did was not okay, and our staff was very professional about it and have been so far. And not saying to you, sir, he built this, he fully knew it, and he did it anyway. So you're not the first case we've ever had with this. So bottom line is, like I said, there's storage units next to it. The issue I had was in the back, you came back, thank you for doing your due diligence and asking the people that were residential in that area to say, okay, is this gonna bother you because it could cause a lot of noise and stuff for them? They said, no. At this point, I'm willing to agree with him putting it here, but to protect our staff, I have to say the facts on the issue.
Very much, if I may, Mr. Chairman. That was very informative to get that chronology in my mind. The application was submitted on May 16th. And when they visited the site on about May 24th, I think you said it was, it was under construction.
No, pretty much built.
Yeah, but majority of it built at least. Yeah, yeah, and it, like I say, they go up very quickly. But does that excuse him? No. Are there extenuating circumstances? Yes. And based on this prior experience, there would be quite a lag. It's gotten much better, obviously, from years ago when he had the first one.
Mr. Hague, I'll just tell you, I think you're pretty much doing good, so I, I would just let it go from there.
You know, one of the first, one of the first things they taught us in trial techniques in Moscow is sit down and shut up, make your point.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, it looks like you're doing pretty good.
We've had plenty of discussion, is there a motion, I heard Mr. Roskin.
My question is, we know when the building was essentially built, but when was the concrete poured? Cause essentially, you can't build a building till you got the slab, and it sounded like that slab was there two years before the building was even built.
The, the iron was, the slab, as my understanding, was in place by this time. But it was already poured for.
Right, for that building, pre-engineered.
I'm gonna move approval.
I'll second that motion.
Did you want to add that third one with the, putting it?
I would add the third condition. To have something on file.
Cody.
Relative to the letters of support that.
Okay, so you're okay with amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we got a motion to approve with three requests from staff.
Three conditions.
Three conditions. One is the variance allows this 8.7 setback to the east of the property line for the existing storage shed and that the applicant obtained approved building permit, adheres to any building inspection requirements, and pays all applicable penalty fees. And number three would be to have a note added to the property of, uh, Jody?
Miscellaneous document that would follow the title of the property.
Run with the land on that, yes.
Okay, any further discussion, Mr. Drews?
So when I looked at it, I, I wasn't aware that there was a, apparently a third complaint that I don't think that I had seen on that 23665. So I wasn't aware of that. So I was looking only at the, at the other two property owners that had responded at that point in time indicating that they didn't have an issue with it. So consequently, based on that, I felt that it was probably appropriate to approve.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate, present an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much, have a good day, good to see you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hague.
Cody, item B.
Cody Sakar Environmental Planner, item B is subdivision regulation variance, COSV 24-0001. It's to waive the requirement not to construct the road to ordinance 14 standards. The applicant is Adrian Ranch LLC, Neil Adrian, and the agent is Advanced Design, Janelle. Both of them are in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is near 13761 Highway 40. Current zoning district is agriculture, existing land use is agriculture. Access is off Thoson Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Staff takes a two-pronged approach when considering variances. For prong number one, whether granting the variance turns counter to public interest. Staff didn't find that granting a variance would be in public interest, as it is, it's a right of way. And too narrow of a road can cause traffic issues. And prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance. There are no topographical reasons or special conditions that would prevent the applicant from constructing the road to ordinance 14 standards. Ordnance 14 requires a 66-foot wide right of way, which is what Thoson Road right of way is. But it requires a 24-foot wide road with a six-inch gravel and a base course thickness of eight inches. There is, currently on the property, there is no structures and there is no on-site waste management system. The applicant is doing this as part of the planning process. And they're looking at creating tract A, which is 40.36 acres. This was right of offer in a department review. County Highway Department recommends that the road be built to ordinance 14 standards. However, this would create inconsistent road widths, and it's within the Thoson Road District. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the subject property to create tract A of Thoson Subdivision Number Two. Preliminary plan, COPPL 24-0001, was approved at the February 20th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. No special condition exists that would prevent the applicant from constructing Thoson Road to ordinance 14 standards. So staff is recommending denial of subdivision regulation variance, COSV 24-001. As there's no special condition that exists that would excuse literal enforcement of ordinance 14 standards. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff does not have any conditions to be included.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Cody. I think the first one I heard was Ross connect.
Would you put my map up that I, the one that shows Highway 40? And then this particular road? Keep going. That one right there. So off of Highway 40, and I, I use Rapid Mam, so I'm not within, I'll be within a few feet, but not exact, but off of Highway 40, you travel, how do you pronounce that name of that road?
Thoson.
Okay, so you travel on that road roughly nine, or 1,900 feet on a 12-foot surface. And then you go onto this piece that you want to follow up, ordinance 14, which is roughly 1,200 feet long. And then you're gonna go back into another piece to a dead-end cul-de-sac, and that piece is roughly 900 feet, 12 foot. So you're going 12 foot, then 24 foot, and back to 12 foot. And when you get to the end on the south, it's a cul-de-sac, it dead ends. And it services three or four, I call that a driveway, really not a road, but to me, I just don't know why you would have to sit there and go from 12 feet off of Highway 40 and then go to 24 feet and back to 12 feet to a dead-end cul-de-sac. That's where I'm having problems trying to digest this.
Okay, you done?
I'm done.
I think Blaster?
Yes, sir. I got a couple of questions, Cody, is this in a road district, first of all?
Yes, it is.
Is the road district here to testify? I just want to know if the road district individuals are here to testify.
I don't believe so, they were sent the routing, and I even tried calling last week and left a voicemail. I haven't heard anything back from the road.
My other question is, have we seen this one before? It looks vaguely familiar, but I'm just.
We've had similar ones.
We've had a similar one, and it was just, you know, cause there are some similar ones out there, okay. So those are the two first questions that I had, I guess I'll wait to hear the other side before I have some other ones.
And then you would have seen the prelim at the, the preliminary plan at the last meeting for, for this property.
Chair.
Okay, Ms. Hagcock.
I'm not in disagreement if we're gonna have road districts and we have 12 foot. I don't care if they're eight or 10 or 12 or 16. I'd just like to make them no maintenance roads, so for the future, they don't give these back, these roads that have 12 and 10 and 12 and 14 on them. I don't know, in a road district, and that's probably a lot of times without being, saying anything, the highway department is doing these no maintenance roads, full maintenance, whatever. And for the future, if we have a 12 foot to a 14 to a 12, and then they decide that they don't want to have a road district anymore, then we get to take it over. So I don't know legally if we could make road district areas, or maybe Joe knows, into no maintenance roads, because these roads aren't gonna be to our standards, and we are the ones, as county people or county constituents, are gonna be paying to redo the road. So I don't know how that particularly works, Joe, maybe you could tell me.
Well, Alexa's back there, but I'll do my best to answer the question to the best of my knowledge. So my knowledge of the road district statutes is they do not have the authority to designate a minimum or no maintenance roads. That's strictly the townships and the county. And as far as if the, you know, say the road district does dissolve, there's also a statute, and I don't recall which one it is, but the, the county has no, no obligation to take these roads over, right? If, if a road district chooses to dissolve, and it's not on a section line, it's not the county's responsibility.
Thank you, and that was my issue, cause I had a guy that called from Wyoming, and he lived in Rapid City, and it was about a road district, right? And same thing, and he goes, well, why can't the county just take it over now? And that's why I'm saying this, I'm not really against what you're doing from 12 to 14 to 12. It's when you come in and say, okay, my road district, they're not maintaining, they're not doing, can you, can you take this over? And by that time, it's substandard, and then who pays for it? So not against people doing this, just make sure in the future, when people aren't getting mad in your, in your road district, when we don't want to take it over because we have allowed this, it's saved money in the, in the long run, right away. But in the future, for the county, we can't take over roads that aren't ordinance 14 standards. So just so we're all clear on that, I'm okay doing this, but just so we're clear on the ordinance 14 standards of road districts.
Right, yeah, the, the road districts have their old subset, subset of statutes, 3112A, right? There's like, I think there's like 50 sub statutes underneath there. They, they operate just like the county, right? They, they, they elect a president, a vice president, a secretary treasurer, and then they have the option to add more board members if they so choose. The road district that I'm in has five board members, right? So we have a president and then two executive board members, essentially. So they, they, they can operate very efficiently, but they can also operate very inefficiently. I, I think I've spoke to the gentleman that you're speaking of out in Rapid Valley. You know, the, the road district was created, the president is the, the developer, and they've not done anything, and they've not levied for the last four or five years. And now they want the county to take it over. And, and, you know, I tell them often, the, the process to do that is to come in front of you guys, so. But the long story short is, the county has, from my understanding, no obligation to take these roads over if a road district were to dissolve, and the road district doesn't have any authority to designate these roads no maintenance or minimal maintenance.
I guess what I was saying is, if it came up and it was a road district, I would make it no maintenance if we, if they had agreed in these senses to do their roads and do their areas themselves in this road district to 12 to 14, instead of making substandard. So if they came up and said, now, I don't want my road district anymore, we don't want it, take it over, I would only take over road district at that point if the ordinance 14 standards were in place at that time. Because, like I said, I'm okay, and I have done it before, in road districts for that reason, so.
Right, and, and I've been here, going on six years now, and you guys have voted no on every single road district that's approached you to take them over. We simply just don't have the resources, there's many miles of roads out there in road districts. There's, you know, when I first started, I think there was about 160. Now there's over 180 road districts with several, you know, several hundred miles of roads. So, I mean, it's a pretty great precedence to start if you take over one, so.
Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna let Janelle speak, do you have a question?
Well, it was gonna kind of follow up on what Joe was just saying there, and it just comes down to it, do we know if this road district is taking their taxes? I mean, I just want to know if the road district is doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
Janelle might know.
Janelle.
Good morning, commissioners, Janelle Fink with Advanced Design here on behalf of Mr. Adrian. He's been in contact with the road district as far as absorbing the proposed lot into the road district. So from our understanding, they're willing to accept that at some point in time. And by creation of this lot and adding into the road district, it also provides some additional funding source and assessment source for the road district. And by creation of this lot and adding into the road district, it also provides some additional funding source and assessment source for the road district. As um, Commissioner Roskinet pointed out, this is a, a long stretch of road and there are very minimal numbers of houses. So the road district probably struggles a little bit to, to maintain the road. Um, just when you have fewer people and greater lengths of road. So this one plat that we're doing, one single residential lot, forty acres, such a large, it's a large parcel. Um, isn't going to be adding a lot of traffic to them, but it'll add some much needed cash into that road district. And anybody that I've ever spoken to in terms of a road district, I know sometimes it's hard to keep those things active and going. But there's a pretty clear understanding that the county is not willing to accept maintenance on roads, um, these kind of remote roads anymore. And so it's in their best interest to figure out a way to make this work and to do the best they can, so.
Any questions for Janelle? If not, I go back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I don't know where we're sitting on this. I do, I would like to hear from the um, road district, but I mean, they weren't here. Sometimes we do give, um, you know, one more round, just see if they'll come, uh, just so we can make sure we're asking all the right questions. Maybe the individual was coming and there was an issue, but uh, I, I would like to visit with them if it's possible. It's kind of where I'm sitting. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. If it, it sounds like the individual is going to be moving the land into it, I just would like to make sure that we cover all of our bases and ensure that the road district is understanding of what we're talking about today.
Thank you. I, my thoughts on this is I tend to agree that going from twelve to twenty-four to back down to twelve. I've been, I, I think creates an uncertain safety, but I also think uh, it's more of a driveway. I think with road districts, I've been approached by a person that wants to do them. I think that people are already doing stuff to maintain their roads when they're on that minimum people. So I, when you, when you form a road district, I think uh, everybody's pitching in because you're not getting enough money from the taxes to actually maintain the roads myself. Sir.
Yeah, I've talked to the uh.
Need to identify yourself.
Oh, Neil Adrian.
Okay.
I'm the um, um, owner of the property.
Okay.
Um, I've talked to the uh, road district president, Doug, and uh, he's, I've been in, he's our neighbor. I've been in communication with him for the last year about what we intend to do with the Thoson Plaid Track Day. And uh, he's, he's all in favor of it. He knows, he's aware of what we are, what we are doing.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Any questions for Neil?
Uh, no, but I'll just give a clarification. Uh, Joe Miller came up and did show that they are levying, so they are active in it, so.
Yeah.
That gives me a little bit more comfort.
Okay.
And I might add, uh, Mr. Chair, that the owner got ahold of me and, and that's why I put that map together. So I could really understand what we're voting on the day.
Appreciate that.
And by doing so, it just makes it easier for me to support your request to approve the variance, so. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve C O S V twenty-four dash zero zero one. And the reason why is because I feel that uh, the county's gonna have no obligation to maintain this road, that the road district's in place to take care of it. And it, it just doesn't make sense to me to go from twelve to twenty-four back to twelve. And, and uh, at the end of that uh, road, it comes to the cul-de-sac where I don't see that you're gonna see any further expansion in residential structures to the south.
I had a motion, was it the second from Drews? Second from Drews? Any further discussion? If none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, and I do have somebody on Zoom who'd like to speak, but I'll, after the presentation.
All right. Megan Talmage Planner, Agenda Item C is variance C O V A twenty-four dash zero 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 two. And is to reduce the setback to the south property line for an existing attached garage from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet. The applicant is Mike Wood and his agent is Advanced Design. This is located at nine four oh eight Main Street in Silver City. And this is point four six acre in suburban residential, residential district. When considering variances, staff takes a two-pronged approach. Um, in the first prong, this does not uh, injure the neighborhood as it's an existing structure. And many other structures in the neighborhood um, do not meet that minimum required setback. But because of our zoning district, um, it doesn't meet that twenty-five foot setback required by that zoning district, suburban residential. Um, there are, on prong two, there are no special conditions that exist to grant the variance. Um, a comment was received from Highway that they are opposed to setback variances in the front yard since it impacts future roads, uh, road development. Um, and this particular parcel needs an approach permit. Um, the applicant obtained a building permit in twenty thirteen to build an attached garage to an existing structure. And at the time, the applicant believed that there was a twenty-six foot setback on the property. Or uh, to the house, existing house, so he built the garage alongside it. Uh, there are no violations on the subject property, uh, but due to a recent survey. Um, the applicant has come forward to correct the fifteen foot setback rather than the twenty-five. And they have, they are working with Highway to obtain an approach permit at, at this time. Um, staff still recommends to deny C O V A twenty-four dash zero 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 two. As there are no special conditions on the subject property that would support approval. However, uh, if the board disagrees, staff recommends two variants or two conditions.
Thank you, Megan. I'll go to, Holly, do we have him on Zoom? Okay, let's go to speaker request on Zoom. This is Dale Burke. Dale Burke.
Yes, sir. Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have the floor, sir.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, I want to first thank you for allowing me to speak on this matter. And I'm the interested party in the property directly across the street, across Main Street from the property in question. And I don't know how the commissioner or anybody's leaning on this, but I just wanted to put my two cents worth in and say, I don't see any problem with granting this variance. The structure's already been this way for a long time. Nobody's had a problem with it. Um, it's not causing anybody any trouble or any problems. Uh, Main Street, Silver City at that section is very unlikely to change in the future. There's no real room for expansion. It's already adequate for any purposes that any of us would need for that, you know, in that area to, you know, access or, or remove anything from the properties. So I just wanted to let you know that I, I don't have any problem with this uh, variance being granted. And uh, I would recommend the, the commission approve it.
Yes.
Thank you, Dale, for taking the time to hang on for this item to come up. You have a question for him?
Sure, thank you.
Ms. Haddock.
No, Dale, I was just gonna agree with you. Um, it's been there a long time and it hasn't caused a problem. I don't see we're having neighbors um, writing in on anything. It was an honest mistake on a survey. Um, and he came in and was honest enough to tell us about it. So um, for me, it's a yes, moving forward.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
Sir, are you related to Joe?
Yes, Joe was my uncle. He's my father's brother.
Okay, nice guy. Uh, and I uh, agree with Commissioner Haddock. Um, Mr. Wood got ahold of me and uh, and what the hell, Silver City, I've been in the Silver City a lot because we've been trying to navigate some problems with the dumpsters in Silver City, so I know that uh, street very well. And it aligns with everything else and that's why I'll support it too. There's, it's not uh, out of, it might, uh, if you sit there and put it on a plat, it might not look right. But if you look down Main Street in Silver City, it aligns with everything else that's in place and been in place probably for a hundred years.
Well, Chair, I'll move approval based on it's been there a long time and um, honest mistake. And that there hasn't any, been any complaints on it.
I'll second that.
Moved by Haddock for approval with her reasonings and seconded by Roskinet. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Megan, and thank you, Mr. Burke.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up brings us up to item D.
Cuda Sack of our mental planner. Item D is subdivision regulation variance C O S V twenty-four dash zero 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 two. It's to waive the requirement to stru- construct additional water storage for domestic use and fire protection on the subject property. Uh, the applicant and landowner is Tanner Engel and Abby Carlson. Uh, location of the property is at the end of um, Eleanor Drive and Eliza Court in Wells Three Acres. Current zoning is planning and development district. Existing land use is vacant, access is off Eliza Court, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, so again, uh, when we look at variances, we take a two-pronged approach. Uh, for prong number one, whether granting a variance runs counter to public interest. Uh, staff does believe that not improving our um, updating water storage does run counter to public interest. As it can limit the availability of water uh, for the subdivision. And prong number two, whether a special condition exists in grant of variance, uh, no special condition exists that would prevent additional water storage. Uh, just a little history, on June sixth, on June sixth, two thousand eight, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan LPL twenty dash zero eight with conditions. Uh, those conditions laid out uh, plat notes uh, of how the subdivision was gonna uh, meet the Pennington County subdivision regulations at the time. Uh, so that's what the applicant is, uh, the applicant has requested to vacate some of those notes. Uh, for notes thirteen and fourteen for the water storage involves getting a subdivision regulation variance. Um, the applicants are proposing to place a single family residence on the subject property. Uh, however, in order to get a building, per the notes, once sixty-five building permits have been issued. Uh, you have to post surety for the water storage and then once eighty-five permits have been issued, you have to actually construct that storage. Um, so the applicants are requesting to waive that. Um, there are approximately thirteen lots within the Rushmore um, ranch estates that have not been developed. Um. Oh, sorry. Uh, this lot does have, um, several of the lots in the area do have uh, fire hydrants on the property. And I believe speaking with the applicant who's in the audience, um, that his lot is one of those lots that does have that. Uh, he is not requesting to vacate the note for fire sprinklers, so he's um, staying consistent with the other requests. And the Board of Commissioners have approved five previous requests not to construct additional water storage uh, for the subdivision. Uh, so with that, staff does still recommend denial of subdivision regulation variance C O S V twenty-four dash zero 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 two. As no special condition on the property would excuse literal enforcement. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and decides to approve their request, staff just has one condition to be able to.
Chair.
Ms. Haddock.
So tell me what we put on the other ones to be fair to these guys. What, what other, I, what's fair, I already know. But um, what have we done with the other ones where we didn't have the uh, extra storage on them?
Uh, so for the other ones, um, from the very beginning, the board um, basically said that if they were, if they were willing not to vacate the note requiring fire sprinkler systems in the house. Um, and try to get a subdivision regulation variance to that, that um, the board would be willing to waive the, the water, um, the additional water storage requirements. So that's what's been done. All the other houses in the area are in the subdivision have had to, as part of their building permit, get fire sprinkler systems put in as part of their building permit. Um, and then this variance, similar variance was approved for those other five lots.
So are they saying they're going to do that?
Yes.
And then we put that on the uh, if we agree, we put that on a condition. Am I correct?
Um, no, it wa- you wouldn't need a condition, so on an additional item uh, on the regular agenda.
Yes.
There's the, the request to vacate the plat notes off of here. Um, there's a plat note that requires that sprinkler system on there.
Okay.
Um, that note um, isn't being touched. Um, they're leaving that in there, so in order to get their building permit through us, they would still need to do the fire.
So, so we're giving them, if we give them the variance, we're doing what we've done before, and I remember a bunch of these. And then um, to cover it, so we wouldn't have to put it on the plat, it would already be in a condition on one of their other uh, agenda items that are coming up next.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
I don't know how many hours we've spent on this subdivision. And you know, the John Arlith, he should have never put those notes on that plat, in my opinion. That's just caused the, the landowners up there a headache. It's caused us commissioners a headache. Uh, and on page three of three, item C, five other properties have had these notes vacated. And for that reason, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, this uh, C O, C O C V twenty-four dash zero zero two with one condition for the reasons I just mentioned.
Reasons you mentioned, okay. And it moved by Roskinet, but the reason he mentioned part of the motion and seconded by Haddock. Is there any further discussion? Do the applicants want to make any comments? Get, it's going, okay. With that being said, uh, yeah.
Welcome, Carl.
I have to give, I have to give you the opportunity to hang yourself. No. So with that being said, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Moved to adjourn the Board, as Board of Adjustment reconvene as Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. To adjourn Board of Adjustments, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We go to regular hearings and this is the first time we see Brittany through all of this.
Good morning, Commissioners, or sorry, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, the consent agenda, um, I'm Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Uh, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following three items. Item E is Hard Rock Mining Research Update. Item F is Major Planning and Development Overlay Amendment Review P U R nineteen dash zero nine for Donna Hartshorn. And the Planning Commission recommended to continue P U R nineteen oh nine to the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting. Item G is Planning and Development Overlay Review P U R twenty-three dash zero one for John and Emily Rowe. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of P U R twenty-three dash zero one with twenty-seven conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, any Commissioners wish to have them?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
Item number eh, E.
E. So I'd look for a motion to approve F and G.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Lester, seconded by Haddock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the Hard Rock Mining Research Update.
Mr. Chair, um, I guess when I read this one and saw it was on consent, it said staff would look for the board's direction to move forward on the Hard Rock Mining ordinance. Well, if we consented, did we say move forward? Are we saying, I just wanted to make sure we're doing the right thing with that?
Yeah. Um, so Cody Sack of our mental planner, um, the state's attorney and I have talked. We don't know how much more we can research or if there's anything else that the board wants us to research. Um, we've given you the information. Now I think we're just looking for, do you, do we want to move ahead with the proposed ordinance? And make changes as, as we go to that, what's already been proposed? Or are there things that you want changed before we even bring that draft back up? Um, so it, it, we're just looking for some direction, I guess.
Mind of it. My understanding was that you got, Planning Department was coming up with a chronological order or chart or graph for the commission. And you guys were working on that. That was my, my last understanding.
Alexa Muller, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. Mr. Chair, I believe the chart you were referring to is the chart that I previously provided two weeks ago. Um, which was a flow chart explaining who does what, um, and who controls certain laws. Um, for example, the federal government controls, as you could tell by my chart, quite a few um, legal arenas as it relates to mining. I believe that's what you're referring to.
Okay, I didn't, I was gone two weeks ago.
It's my understanding we only have one hard rock mine in the Black Hills and that's a small on paw outfit out of Hill City. That uh, mines slate over by Slate Creek Dam and he might have a couple other little mines. I just want to make sure whatever, when we do come to a, an agreement on the hard rock mining, that we don't jeopardize uh, Jim Dean and his operation that he's had in the family for thirty, forty years.
There's only one in South Dakota by the way, one hundred. There's only one in South Dakota, by the way, one hundred rock mine.
So what's the, which, which the Commission? I, I didn't see the chart, but I mean, I can, I can get that.
Continue it if you need to, to look at it, if you'd like. I don't think that's a problem, is it a problem continued, so like, can look at it?
No.
I would move to continue.
Second.
It's been moved to continue.
I think that's the motion, wasn't it?
No, it was on consent.
Okay.
Okay, good catch, Mr. Lester. Uh, yeah, so we'll move to continue, I'll get the charts and review those, and we'll have a full discussion at our next meeting. On the twentieth? Is that the date? March, March nineteenth? Okay. All in favor to continue to the March nineteenth? In favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that, hold it now, Ma. That's end of our consent agenda. Uh, the following planning and zoning matters in uh, the in our uncontested hearings are those which Planning Department has not yet received or pr- are provided comment contesting the item. Documents for each item have been reviewed by the Commissioners and decision during these hearings will be made based on information provided in the packet and the short presentation. If we receive comments contesting the item, the matter will lead across in the same manner as the contested hearings. Cody.
Uh, Cody Sack of Environmental Planner. Uh, item number H is Conference of Plan Amendment, uh, COCA twenty-four dash zero 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 one. It's a change of the future land use from Ranchet District to rural residential district, the applicant is Charles and Jenny Hansen. Ex, uh, the location of the property is two four zero two five Trixie Lane, involves three acres. Uh, staff is recommending approval of Conference of Plan Amendment CA twenty-four dash zero one uh, with the applicants, or with uh, Planning Commission's concurrence.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, item I is rezoned CORZ twenty-four dash zero 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 one. It's to rezone three acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. Uh, it is the same property as item uh, H. Uh, again, the applicant and landowner is Charles and Jenny Hansen. Uh, staff is recommending approval of rezoned CORZ twenty-four dash zero 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 one with the Planning Commission's concurrence.
Some of.
Moved by Lester.
Second.
Seconded by Roskinet. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item J.
Item J is vacation of plat, uh, COVP twenty-four dash zero zero three. Is to vacate notes on the plat for lot three, block two of Mountain Meadows subdivision. Uh, the out, uh, landowner and applicant is Tanner Ingle and Abby Carlson. Uh, involves three acres, currently zone planning and development district, access is off Eliza Court, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, so this runs concurrently with the subdivision regulation variance that you heard earlier. Um, since that, since that um, variance was approved, uh, staff would recommend approval of vacation of plat COVP twenty-four dash zero 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 three with two conditions, with um, Planning Commission's concurrence.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
Move to approve CORZ twenty-four dash zero zero one.
Second.
Uh.
Wait, wait, nope, that's the wrong one.
Next one, Ron.
Okay. Uh, I'll move to approve COVP twenty-four dash zero 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 three with two conditions.
Second.
Moved by Roskinet, seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and I just want to make the comment. Brittany, is, your staffers doing an op- excellent job. I wasn't trying to say we haven't seen you in a while, but having them come up and do a lot of the work is, they've been doing a really good job of that, and that's what I meant by saying that, so. Kudos to the team. Twenty-five, item twenty-five, twenty twenty-four legislative session review, Mr. Drews, update.
Okay, so, over the weekend, I had provided you a kind of an update as to uh, the county bills, uh, this morning, I, I uh, asked Holly to print out and then read the update on those items. And so, we wanna just touch base on those a little bit. Uh, I think on the second page where we start with uh, House Bill ten fifty-seven, uh, that's the one that would uh, appropriate the one point four million to establish an indigent legal defense. And uh, state thinks that we save counties about two point one million uh, on those appeals. But, there's a additional amount that was uh, put on there of three million dollars, uh, which is county's hope is that this would continue to grow in future years, so that eventually the state would be continually taking on more of the responsibility of the indigent defense. That bill did pass uh, yesterday, uh, in the House, and uh, but it needed to be ratified in the Senate today. I'm expecting that'll be ratified without any amendments or other changes in it. So, that's probably the number one bill for us, for counties this year. Uh, the second bill, eh, for counties, I think, is Senate Bill one eighty-seven. This is uh, the one that would provide seven million to assist counties and cities in setting up systems to protect against cybersecurity. Uh, this received a lot of support from, on the legislative side. I'm not anticipating it's gonna be a problem at the Governor's office, but it did then pass yesterday and awaits the Governor's consideration at this point in time. Not part of the, of the summer study, uh, but of great interest is the nine-one-one centers and raising that funding from a dollar twenty-five to two dollars per line for funding PSAPs. Uh, currently, uh, what I understand, our PSAP is being funded to the tune of about twenty-five percent this year, uh, through the nine-one-one dollars. The rest of it being made up through general funds. And so, hopefully with this increase, this would bring us back to what the original intent of the nine-one-one funding was, and that was to have it pay for forty-five to fifty-five percent of PSAP costs. Uh, currently, there's twenty-eight PSAPs in South Dakota. Uh, twelve years ago, there was forty-three, so that's been whittled down by fifteen. Legislature would still like to see some further consolidation on that. Uh, and that's, and they continue to work on that, but trying to find uh, consolidation in some of these real remote huge areas is, is a difficult challenge. The uh.
Can I say something on that, Gary?
Sure.
So, I talked to Kevin Carley on the, basically the two dollars that we gave him extra. He's been able to hire better, but also with the, or just the exception we gave that, he said he could, with this change in the legislature, it would probably give about a million dollars back to the general fund. So, it was a, it was pretty awesome.
Yeah, it's a, it's a major bill, uh, it's, it's a major bill for all the PSAPs, but
Yep.
Yeah.
That's huge. Just that, you think two dollars or whatever would make a big difference, but that's a lot of goals.
Yeah.
To make up over a million dollars over a year, so.
That's right.
Pretty awesome that they brought that forward.
Can I add an update for you?
Yes, you can.
We just received an email from Chris Jacobson that said the nine-one-one fin- funding bill just came out of the Conference Committee and will be amended with an increase to two dollars. A report from the nine-one-one Commission due July first and sunset July first of twenty twenty-six.
That's, that's good, so, uh, some legislators, uh, primarily the co-chair of the Appropriations Committee wanted to uh, sunset the entire thing, uh, which is what I think probably the sunset is doing. Will sunset it all, uh, in the, as of June, end of June, twenty-six?
July one, yes.
July one, okay. So, which automatically then will bring it up for further discussion in January of twenty-six. So, legislature will have to discuss it and figure out whether they wanna continue on with the same kind of a funding operation that they have for the last many years, uh, or try something different, so. Uh, but this is good news, because by, by July of twenty-six, we'll be able to have further information as to what it's actually doing, and if there is further consolidation of other PSAPs at that point in time, so, that's, it's good news overall.
It said it could go to the House, it could go to the floor as early as this afternoon.
Okay, okay. So I know that on that Conference Committee, uh, our local legislator Becky Drury was on that Conference Committee. Um, Mary Fitzgerald also, I don't remember who else was on that. So then, uh, we drop down to uh, Senate Bill one thirty-four, which is the one that would have created the healthy forest and tried to salvage the timber industry. Uh, they ended up uh, being killed uh, yesterday. And so, um, it never gained the support of the Governor, and consequently, uh, the Governor's office did request the, the House to kill the bill, which they did. House Bill uh, ten thirty-nine, which is the one that I talked to uh, uh, Eric about earlier, is the is a bill that did pass and was sent to the Governor. It would say that the South Dakota Department of Corrections would have to pay the cost for uh, any um, legal action uh, required because a criminal in a penal institution had committed a crime. And so it only affects the five counties, Pennington County being one of them. If you recall, a few years ago, we had an inmate in Sioux Falls that uh, killed a prison guard. And uh, so these can become very expensive items. Earlier in the session, Eric had estimated that uh, our cost was somewhere between ten to fifty thousand per year. Uh, and that there's somewhere between ten to fifty cases per year, so. Uh, so there is a cost to it. And then the last bill is uh, Senate Bill one forty-four, which is the funding for the aeronautics project. Did Christie send anything as far as, okay. Uh, so, this was a bill by Senator David Johnson, originally tried to get ninety million set aside for the next four years for, for aeronautics for projects throughout the state. Uh, then he amended it down, uh, because it wasn't getting a lot of support. Amended it down to about twenty million dollars for, for the one year, which uh, if you multiply it out, it wasn't a whole lot different. Uh, but yesterday, that was essentially amended down to a thousand nine hundred and three dollars. Uh, doesn't do much for the Rapid City Regional Airport project, nor any other projects throughout the state.
So, brush and Gary.
Yep.
Why would they narrow it down to one nine oh three, that number?
Well, if you think back to when the Wright Brothers' plate was.
Oh, okay.
So, there was a little jab.
Okay.
I understand Tony, Representative Tony Van Huisen from Sioux Falls uh, did that.
How did he?
Any other questions?
Um, yeah, one, my question would be on Senate Bill one thirty-four, because uh, its demise. What does that really look like for the timber industry in, in Black Hills going forward?
I, I think we need to confer with Ben Woodkey and see what, um, he's the one that's been kinda organizing all this, and what his thoughts are, what the groups that have been talking with him, what their intent would be of moving forward.
Because um, after the Cracker Barrel that we attended last Saturday, I know that some of the legislators were going to spearfish to meet with Representative Johnson and other Senators, US Senators to and I haven't heard how that meeting went yet.
Well, what I understand is that uh, uh, Representative Johnson brought two other representatives in uh, with him from other areas. And uh, they discussed it, and apparently, all three of those representatives represent areas that have forest issues such as this. Uh, Senator Rounds has said that he plans on this coming Friday of introducing federal legislation to further try to uh, enhance, I think, the, the timber estri- timber industry, uh, in an attempt to try to salvage it. So, I mean, it's, you were there for part of it, I mean, there's
Right.
Pretty big horror stories as to what happens when you don't take care of your forest, and, and uh, fires are created, bugs move in.
Yeah, I mean, it it mi- it might not be immediate, but it's, when you sit there and look at long term, it could be devastating, especially since the Black Hills is so reliant on tourism.
Yep, that's right. Other questions?
No, the only comments I got is, I, I just wanna make the point, this is probably, I really appreciated the updates throughout the session that you did, and I think this Commission, I know Mr. Lester's been down to peer, Ross Connect, and, and I know you've spent a lot of time there, Gary. And that's probably, and, and the work that Holly's also done for everybody on, on this legislative season, has been pretty outstanding, I mean, it's been a lot of probably the most involvement in legislation I've seen with this Commission since I've been on it, and, and, and really appreciated of, of the updates and the hard work that everybody's done on this. And I don't think it's just because they had the summer study, I think that was part of it, but I think uh, you guys did an outstanding job advocating for Pennington County this year.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the items is items from Chair or Commission members, the time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full Board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time, direction may be given to bring items back to the Board for future consideration.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, I think I heard Ms. Hancock.
So, um, only an update, and then if we're moving forward, I think we have some of this moving forward already for Drainage uh, Commission. Um, they had a meeting at ten o'clock, and um, one of them was supposed to call me beforehand on the time, and uh, at that time, I was already doing some other stuff, so. Um, called me the same day, which is hard for me to just drop everything, so. What the discussion was, was um, city and county stated they were willing and able to help with smaller scale projects, financially or otherwise. The bottom line for the Hawthorne Ditch is, uh, they need the need for continuing the Hawthorne Ditch. It is still a lot of drainage for a lot of people out there to fill them in or do something different, uh, but cause some major issues for the county out there, I believe. Uh, the drainage basin has been something we've been discussing for a while, and that's east of Enin. Um, that's some huge areas that are having major impacts from uh, development. So, uh, and it does say that, development occurring in the area will affect Murphy's Ranch and Apple Valley Developments. Joe from Highway is looking at doing a RFP and costs and the duration of that study. Planning Department, which we've been looking at for a while, has discussed the development standards to include water quality and water quantity. Means for drainage is huge on developments that are affecting other areas, especially um, these huge developments that are going in areas, that drainage is huge, how it affects downstream or upstream. So, and us hopefully, and I think we did give direction moving forward with the Drainage Commission, uh, dissolving it and kinda doing our own thing. And then, um, the bottom line, uh, a possible drainage utility fee, like the city has, because of the drainage and the issues that are gonna cost, we don't have tons of money in the planning or the uh, Highway Department to do these types of drainage uh, areas, so you could have some major ponds or, uh, detention, uh, retention and different things in these areas that have already been built out that need help, so. Um, we need the people in those areas to help us with that. Um, it ha- it was caused, um, not by just the development, it already had those issues by not putting some of those things in and uh, making the developers put those in for future development in those areas, so had nothing to do with uh, certain people, it just happened to do with how development was done back in the day that we need um, to have those areas, uh, to have proper drainage, a lot of people are getting flooded out, so. Anyway.
Did I miss something, Deb? Was, what meeting was you talking about, they asked you to show?
Uh, three, four, twenty-four, it was yesterday at ten o'clock, the drainage, they were having it with Western Dakota.
Oh, the Western Dakota.
So they invited us all to go, and like I said, I was supposed to go, but I didn't know the day or the time until, well, I knew the day, but not the time till yesterday.
Okay.
By then.
I missed that part, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Chair.
I, I, Mr. Lester was next.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I was gonna touch base on that, I was actually at that meeting. Uh, there was a lot of discussion, um, it does appear from the city, uh, Highway Department was there. It does appear from the city, Highway Department was there, planning was there, Rapid City was there, and of course, Western Dakota Board was there. But some of the interesting things that came about from that is the city didn't realize that there was a there was a person that was on that Drainage Commission, and apparently they moved jobs, so the individual that was there was kind of surprised. Two, they're looking at expanding it all the way into including Box Elder, because everything from from Ening all the way into Box Elder area is probably going to be looked at for, you know, all the way across east. So looking at the drainage and all of that is something that that was discussed in that as well. So not just in the Ening area that's going to impact Murphy Ranch and Apple Valley, but even further into Box Elder, because it may become a bigger issue as we see some of this development and growth.
Okay. Mr. Ross.
Okay, so on the 20th and 21st, about a year ago, we took the recommendation of the DOE's assessed value of the Restmore Plaza Holiday Inn. And then on the 20th and 21st of February, I attended an actual hearing in Ring 302 at the courthouse. And that was very, very educational, and that's, that's why you really want to have good attorneys and a lot of having your ducks in a row. Evidently, they, they won, and so we'll go back to the drawing board. But I really did learn a lot in to hear that type of testimony. They could have just gone to Pier and appealed it, but they actually skipped that process and they went right to Circuit Court. On the 23rd, Gary and I attended Jeff Davis's service at the courthouse rotunda. And on the 27th, Lloyd and I attended a Zoom meeting on the proposed Amtrak route that would service Western South Dakota and traverse south to Cheyenne, Wyoming. The goal is to create a Federal Railroad Administration Greater Northwest Passenger Rail Working Group. The host was Dan Bilka, who is a major advocate for bringing Amtrak to South Dakota. The commission has fostered two support letters in the past, and they may be asked to prepare a third in the form of a resolution. I've got those letters that Holly gave me, I don't know if she passed them on to you, but it's, it's kind of an aggressive project. It seems like it's a long ways off, but you know, you don't got to take that first step if you're going to go a thousand mile trip. The presentation proposal shows Rapid City on the map. Once the final report is submitted to Congress, Dan would like to generate a public petition of support focused on folks from South Dakota. So that was, that guy's pretty aggressive. I mean, he just doesn't give up. And when you sit there and look at the map, we're on the map right now, and there's other communities that would like to be on the map for Amtrak. But yeah, it's encouraging. On the 27th, nope, those are my, so I got there.
You want to, why don't you go ahead and, has anybody else got anything they had underneath?
On the building.
From chair? Nope.
On the building committee.
You're going to go, you're going to go to committee?
Just as well.
You just.
Anyhow, we, the presentation that we had the day, you're pretty aware of what the expansion of the jail is. And then we had to discuss the options for the chamber at the 900 concourse. And there was a couple of options out there, option one and option two, one was a lighter version, and we just went ahead to approve option one, which would be the lighter version. Another issue that came up is furniture. What are you going to do, you know, what furniture stays here, what furniture goes, does any, it just got to be fairly confusing. And then where does the furniture, is furniture part of the construction cost, or is it a separate line item of the departments? So a committee of three was assigned to try to find those answers, and so that's a work in progress.
Can I ask you a question, Ron?
Yes.
We haven't got any hard numbers on that building yet?
I don't think there's any, I haven't seen any hard numbers. Have you, Travis wasn't there?
Well, it seems like before moving forward, so you know what each department is needing to spend, what are the things that are the half twos at this point? That also gives, before departments decide what they need, you want to see how much money you have and see what those hard numbers like AVI or whatever, all those stuff that that are half tiers, how much that's going to cost, because that might burn up anything or a lot of that money before you even ask departments, what do they need for excess?
I know that. I've asked, as, as this thing progresses, I've just asked anything that we've spent, I'd like to see a history of it, so I know exactly where we're at into it. But some of the stuff going forward, Kevin still sticks to that 6 to 7 million dollars that we do not want to exceed that. So those are the only really numbers that I can provide right now.
Why I'm saying that is they just said it today, they kind of do it in the phases and they'll have the numbers and they'll have a project manager or construction manager that has those hard numbers and you move those hard numbers and do phase one or phase two or whatever. But we haven't seen any hard numbers of phase one, phase two. I've seen 36,000 or something on one of the issues on AVI or something, but we are doing some, when I went out there in Sydney, we were doing some major remodel, taking two spaces to make the commission office, our commission office, commission space. That's a huge undertaking, so some of the stuff we know about. So I just, bottom line is, if you don't have hard numbers, how are you moving, how are you moving forward and how much it's going to cost or how much you could spend to redo anything?
I think where we're at now is the commission approved this design group and the software or whatever. And once they come up with a design, then I think, then, then we'll have an idea of what the scope of the project is, and then they will go out for hard bids and then we'll see some actual numbers.
And that makes sense, because that's why I say, we don't really have hard numbers, we're just, so we're doing like we did today, it's BKV, they're taking, they're kind of showing us what the concept is, which we've seen the concepts. And then they're going to go in and then make sure that design is going to work for all the departments. Then after that, then they go in and go, okay, this is what it's going to cost based on what you guys said. They're either going to cut some stuff out at that time or move it forward.
Even when we were trying to figure out option one or option two for the commission chambers, you know, I just said, let's just get this over with them, because we can't sit there and get hard numbers until we, I don't care if it's black, blue, red, I don't just, let's just get moving, so.
So we can see what we.
We went with option one, and it's going to be the lighter version, but at least we're getting closer to a final design so that we can start getting hard numbers, see where we're at in this.
Cool.
On the 28th, I attended, Travis and I attended the Weed and Pest Committee, and Scott is hopeful that a million dollar contract with the Forest Service will be approved, it'll be spread over a five year period. And hopefully, that'll materialize in the near future. Funds will be used for shaded fuel breaks. Current projects include 10 miles of fencing along the South Rockerville Road and getting equipment ready for the 2024 spraying season. Scott's department received a general grant for $5,900 and a weed and pest grant for $5,000. A BLM representative from Bill Fouch was present to discuss options relative to the prairie dog infestation taking place in northeast Pennington County. Neighboring ranches are complaining that the dogs on BLM land are invading and destroying their pastures. The board agreed to increase the weed spraying rates by $5. So a person spraying weeds would go from 25 to 30, a person on an ATV spraying weeds go from 35 to 40, and, and if a truck is used for spraying application, it'd be $50 an hour, up five from 45. And that's all I got.
Yeah.
So the Healthcare Trust Board asked a couple of people if they can fill in, because I had a meeting at 2:30 with Pennington County Housing, with the Chair, Vice Chair and the CEO that day. That came up like two days before, and that seems to be my issues, we do fine, and then I have another committee and something else comes up. So we stayed from 2:30 to 6:00 at the Pennington County Housing redevelopment, and about two hours before the meeting on the, just some of the stuff that the Chair and Vice Chair needed to deal with. So on the Pennington County Housing redevelopment, we're looking at the scattered housing, selling 15 to Black Hills Workshop. We thought that was a good fit. We're trying to find areas where people, instead of in 10 years flipping over our housing that it was supposed to be for, basically, people in need through the low income housing development stuff that we have, we'd like to keep it in those districts that do what we do. So anybody like the Black Hills Workshop or any other community nonprofits or otherwise that would help the same type of people that needing that extra step up or life skills. So the planning commission always goes well, and you've seen some of the stuff on here today, that went well. I did go to Judge Davis's funeral, it was amazing. They really showed a lot of respect for Mr. Davis, Heidi Lindgren, and some of the speakers were just, it was just, wow, you could tell he just had many years, I think it was 40 some years or 50 years with the service of being a judge and what he's done. And just the pictures afterwards are really cool of past and present. So a lot of respect for Judge Davis and sorry to see him pass and hope him, their family and for the future are just, that's a guy we're going to miss in Pennington County. It's a, it's a guy we're going to miss in this area that just did so much for us, so. Anyway.
Mr. Chair.
Are you done, Deb?
Yes, sir.
So at the funeral, they kept talking about Jeff's black truck. So that black truck was a step side Ford pickup with the six cylinder that a good friend of mine went, lived at Johnson Society, and he sold it to Jeff. And it's kind of cool to see that Jeff kept, I mean, he really liked that truck.
He liked hot rods and trucks.
Yeah, Ford beds.
Yeah, they showed him a model of them, and I just think the pictures and stuff said a thousand words of his, his life and how he was above and beyond it. All the speakers were awesome, and the music, the guy that sang Desperado and the other stuff was like, oh, really raspy, but I loved it. It was just, just a great tribute to a guy that represented him the, every step of the way, and I thought, I'd just sit there going, this is amazing, so it was cool. A lot of respect there.
Yeah. Mr. Laster.
So as at the complete health meeting, board meeting, they're in the final steps, ready for their inspection, I think it's next week is when they're going to have it. So other than that, the meeting was actually pretty quick. They, again, they went over another couple of policies and procedures and moved forward from that, so nothing out of the ordinary with that one. Ron went over the Weed and Pest Board. I wasn't at the building committee, but Ron went over that one as well. I was with my daughter, she had surgery, and then the 4H Extension Board. Oh, one thing about prairie dog, if you ever want to see a prairie dog field and how it moves and can go across and drive out to that one that's up off of Pedro and Willsey area, that's the one that came and, and he was complaining about that. If you've, if you've never been up there, I'd encourage you to drive up there and go see the, it's coming across and damaging his grasslands for his cattle and things of that nature. And so it was a good conversation, Ron, but it just seemed like everyone, from, from the federal side, they, they just know the process is going to be really slow and, and they encouraged some other actions instead of, he was considering making a complaint on it, but it might be better for him just to take action on his land and, and they're looking at getting some funding for that though, so.
She, the lady from BLM, her idea to get rid of the prairie dogs is to get a fire truck and spray that foam and tar it down the hole, and then all these bubbles that come up, and when the prairie dog sits and set up, saw that foam on there, take a fishing net and catch them.
Catch them.
And then shake it wherever you want.
Deal with it however you want, yeah.
Now, all those animal lovers that just heard that, that was from Ron.
It wasn't my idea.
The 4H Extension Board met, it's time for them to put new board members on. However, the, the President, the Vice President and the Secretary Treasurer still stay at the same, Matt Oden, Patty Bruner and Heather stay in those particular positions. They did, in general, there was nothing major. However, they're working on a, some, I don't know how to best describe it, but some kind of outreach of, you know, getting into the community and really trying to figure out how to get kids that are at risk, you know, for crime and things, you're familiar with that, and getting them into the 4H program, because that's what the program is designed for, is to bring kids in so that they're doing something other than getting in trouble. So there's going to be some movement, trying to get more kids involved. So I'll let you know how some of that unfolds and plays out. That's it.
Mr. Drury, you have anything?
I've had one item that I forgot. One of the other wins that we had with the county level in the legislature is House Bill 1229. That bill says that when a city is going to annex property next to a township or a county road, whether it be on one side or both sides, that the county has to be at the table to discuss how that's going to proceed. And if there's, if, if the city and the county can't come to resolve on it, it goes, the issue then is presented to the Secretary of the Department of Transportation for the state of South Dakota, and he makes the decision.
Good.
It's a good bill.
It is, it sounds really good.
There's one bill that, he probably didn't keep track of this, but I did, it's Senate Bill 89. And that one, Deb might have some interest in that one, because it changed the eviction process from 30 days to 15. And I read some of that stuff on Dakota Searchlight, and it's like, some folks said, you know, they're just trying to, like these older people, you know, just, you know, get them out of there. And, and then the other side says, you know, it's just too hard to evict bad tenants. And so I was really kind of torn on that, because I, you know, I just don't, I don't know, it was kind of the middle of the road, but I think that is one bill that did pass. I was just talking about Senate Bill 89. And so when you evict somebody, they're trying to make it easier. And I think the current process now is 30 days and other, I think that.
Four day notice and then a 30 day.
But they're trying to reduce it 30 to 15. I think that bill passed.
Wow, that'd be nice. In some cases, most people move out by then, but when by the time they squat for that 30 days, you can have somebody sit for a week, which we did, four days, the place was trashed because they knew they were leaving, and they were always good. So 15 days is better than 30. Not because we're trying to be yucky as people that want to rent, but most of the time, if you're a problem and, and you need that, and we already know that from the Pennington County Housing, when it's a problem, it's past the problem that, of the eviction, you're not just saying, because I don't like you, you got to move out. You're actually doing stuff that's pretty extensive to a place to do that to somebody. So, makes sense, Ron.
Anything else? Well, I was complete health board, thanks Travis, I wasn't able to attend that. The compensation committee, I was back in time, but then I ended up having to go in for surgery that, that number after that, so, so I missed that, but I did get the notes from the compensation committee. What I highlight on that is March 19th, Joe Miller will be doing a presentation to the Board of Commissioners, a PowerPoint outlining the history and previous wage scales and issues that came with those. It will then lead into the purpose of benefits of all the in-house wage study and goals process. Also in the suggestions of the committee was, what they'd like to do is they'd have, really like the, the Board of Commissioners to stay engaged and ask questions. I mean, there was even a question of Alco asking to recommend setting up work sessions for the commissioners to see how the process and positions and the wage scale study goes. So those, something like that at the next meeting, after we hear the whole presentation if we want to have. It's kind of, I think it's kind of hard to go through a whole day's meeting and to have a presentation and be able to take it all in. It might be a good work session where you take a good hour and that's all you listen to. It's, because quite frankly, these department heads, they've taken a lot of time and effort to learn what they're doing and work in the process, and they really want to be able to communicate to us what, what they've learned and how it works too. So that may be something we hear at our next meeting. So just put that in, in mind. And otherwise, I was gone also during the WR NACO and Public Lands deal, but I'm getting the notes for those printed up, and I will get those, I'll send out the minutes to the commissioners on that. If you're. If your guys are okay with that. But I couldn't get them all sent over to Joan today, but I'll get them after this meeting. We're going to work on that and get, so you can kind of keep up on that because there is some stuff on the legislation that they were talking about. Remember I was talking about the old growth. They were going to work with legislators on that. And there was also some talk of this, uh, I believe it's the CRC fund for, that Scott Duffy uses to, for the schools. Um, that was up for renewal every three years and they were asking us to send out, uh, to legislators our support for that. And so I will get that information and get it sent out to, to everybody. With that, that's all I have.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to Drews. The amount is the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to executive session for personnel issue SDCL one twenty-five dash two dash one.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Full, motion carries. Look for motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Moved by Roskin, next, seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to play Sean Smith at DBMC forty-four, step nineteen, three thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and twenty cents bi-weekly, effective March seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
I talked to, um, Joe and, uh, Sean ahead of time. Um, I wanted to know what the, um, benefits were and it's eighteen thousand, something added on and the total is an eight, nine thousand, seven fifty-two with the eighteen thousand. Um, why I, uh, do that is so I know the information beforehand and it's something that we can discuss to a certain extent. Cause there is some wage comparables and stuff in here and years of service. I have worked with Sean, oh, a few years now, and, um, he goes above and beyond with his work, but he also, um, uses his skills a lot as an engineer. And for an engineer to be paid eighty-nine, seven plus benefits, I believe is a very positive thing. In fact, um, I'm going to be up straight and probably shock y'all. I think he should be paid because of his engineer skills, maybe more. But I didn't look at comparables or wage studies. What I did is I have, um, family members that are not, they're actually in government. And they start about right here is where he's starting. So, um, for me, this was a no-brainer to put Sean, uh, where he's at. Like I said, I did some more comparables. I compared it with other government agencies and what, um, his job description is, plus his skills outside of just doing, uh, highway work. So I'm in agreement with this today.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I just want to make a slight correction. He's going to go from eighty-nine to ninety-seven plus benefits. But I concur in the aspect of, um, I think targeting and individual, um, evaluations and making sure that we're at least looking at all the avenues of it. And, um, you know, we are in county work. We're in government work. We don't expect to be paid like a private individual, but, um, we do, we should be paying people what they're worth. And he does do quite a bit of work. So.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
So I thought we're taking from step thirteen to step nineteen. Am I correct? Maybe I just added the total wrong on eighty-nine, seven, five, two, Travis. Cause if you take, are we going, Gary, did you make the motion DBMC forty-four, step nineteen at three thousand seven nineteen twenty?
Bi-weekly.
Okay, that adds up to eighty-nine, seven, five, two. And maybe I missed some months or I saw it somewhere from Joe or something, but that's where I got my numbers, Travis. Am I wrong, Joe?
You have eighty-nine right now.
Okay.
Thirty-seven nineteen times twenty-six.
Okay.
Weeks in the year will give you the.
One oh seven that Travis was talking about?
It'll be ninety-six, six, ninety-four is what he's going to go to.
At the motion that's on the floor.
At the motion he's going.
Yes, thirty-seven nineteen times twenty-six.
Okay, because I got DBMC forty-four, step nineteen at three thousand seven nineteen.
Yeah, take that three thousand seven hundred nineteen times twenty-six.
No, that's why I did it wrong. You know why?
Twenty-four.
I did.
Twenty-six, fifty-two divided by two is twenty-six.
And I'm still in agreement. Thank you.
Okay. So we have the correct motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Say none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Move to adjourn.
So move.
Moved, moved by Laster, second to adjourn, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.